And staff for allowing us to be a late afternoon, early evening meeting on this side of the coast. I just wanted to make a few comments before we start, sort of like rules of engagement in a sense. I just want to stress that we still have fresh in our minds each and every one of your comments from the last meeting. So with that said, everyone can still have their say, but appreciate if it wasn't tremendously redundant, and we certainly would honor any and all new and fresh information, just out of, maybe we can be home before sunrise. We're going to have two minutes for a speaker, and we'll give you a heads-up warning with 30 seconds to go. We are going to hold to that, please. I'm not going to allow time sharing. Sometimes people say, "I got my wife's time," or husband's time. Please, no. If you want to say something, you say it yourself. Try to keep comments, applause, hissing, whatever. Just keep it down. We're not going to allow that. And when you're speaking, remember that you're talking to the commission, to the five of us, not to anybody else in the audience and whatnot. So with that said, and the student skills, those are always pretty cool, too. We can keep those in mind as well. So with that. Thanks for all the papers, too. Allow me to open up the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, January 14th, and please join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, could you do the roll call, please?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Commissioner Flannigan?
Here. I'm here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Chair Goreski?
Here.
Commissioner Kirsten Tucker?
Here.
And Commissioner Ramirez?
And staff, we have Monowitz, Fox, and Schu to support our efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. The next part is oral communication, where we allow the public to speak on any item that's not on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I have received one request for oral communication. The speaker is Dan Hagerty.
Oh, great. Okay, good. Dan, would you like to come up and chat?
Will the speaker be restricted to two minutes, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please.
Dan Hagerty, El Granada, 26-year resident here at El Granada. I'm speaking tonight. I expect that the commission will be receiving an application for a use permit for the Coastside Fire Protection Agency to build a fire station on the, one of the remaining commercial lots on the single street, the single downtown block of El Granada. So I'm requesting that you consider to not grant that use permit on the C1 portion of the property, based on the very limited amount of commercial zoned property that we have in El Granada, and the uniqueness of that one block downtown, geographically situated with the Surfers Beach right across the street, and the, there will be some kind of new park across the street. And it's just very, a lot of community members, close to 500, have already put their name on a petition for something more of a smaller, more appropriate, smaller commercial combination town plaza, open town plaza, which, you know, based on Daniel Burnham's original design of the city, all roads kind of lead into this center of the town. It's a perfect town center concept. So for that, I'm sure you'll be hearing from others regarding this, but thank you for considering that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We have consideration of the minutes from the December 17th meeting. Any changes or a motion?
I can move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
A second, then.
We've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. That's 5-0. Okay, Heather, if you could read in item number one.
The owner is the Big Wave North, Big Wave LLC. The applicant is David Byer. File number is PLN 201300451. Location is Airport Street in Princeton, Minnesota.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Let's see. Okay, there we are. So just to give you a review of the basics of this project, there are two project sites. The larger, outlined in yellow, is the north parcel. The south parcel is below it. The industrial area of Princeton waterfront area, there's the Pillar Ridge manufactured home community to the north. The zoning of the two parcels, on the north parcel, the zoning is M1, which is light manufacturing, DR for design review, CD for coastal district, and there's an AO portion along the front. And the south parcel is owned W for waterfront, AO, airport overlay, DR for design review, and CD for coastal development district. And it's all on Airport Street. So in this presentation, I will give you some background with regard to your action on November 12th. I'll give you a brief project description of the eight-building option, show you sort of some slides of the plans that were provided, give you an overview of the construction phasing. I'll also summarize comments from the Coastal Commission, the Coastside Design Review Committee, the MidCoast Community Council, as well as the Committee for Green Foothills, and provide a recommendation. So going back to 2011, the county approved the project, what we call the 2010 project, and it came with a 2010 EIR. And then in August 2012, the project was appealed to the Coastal Commission, where in August 2012, a decision of denial was made by the Coastal Commission, which denied the project. In October 13th, the applicant came back with what's called the Big Wave North Parcel Alternative, working with those at the Coastal Commission, as well as other community interests to come up with the new North Parcel Alternative. Then in July and November this year, the county released the addendum for the North Parcel Alternative, as well as a response to comments document in the final addendum. Also in July to November, the project went through a four-meeting Coastside Design Review Committee review process, and I have a slide with regard to their findings. And on November 12th, you reviewed the, the four-building alternative was described in the staff report. However, the applicant had introduced an eight-building option that was a collabora, not a collaboration, it was, it included the, some input from Committee for Green Foothills. And then the Planning Commission took action. I have a slide that tells you, that summarizes the action taken on November 12th, and that included, staff gave a presentation rather briefly of the new eight-building option. The Planning Commission continued the item to today in order to obtain more detailed elevations in the site plan, to refer the project, the eight-building option project, to the Coastside Design Review Committee, as well as to give the Coastal Commission and the MidCoast Community Council a chance to review it and comment. The purpose of the continuance was also to allow additional time for the public to review the eight-building option, and for staff to provide, prepare a staff report addressing an issue that was introduced at the last meeting, the Lanterman-Petras short act and the Olmsted decision, as well as to more comprehensively describe the eight-building option. So many of these items of staff report and allowing for more public review time were accomplished by the scheduling of this meeting, and my presentation will focus on items one and two of this slide. So then after that time, the Coastside Design Review Committee was given the opportunity to review the eight-building option on December 18th. As far as project changes, I have a slide that shows the site plan, but in summary, the project went from four buildings to eight buildings, retaining the same amount of square footage. The Wellness Center went from one larger building to three buildings, with a size reduction of 97, it was initially 97,500, and with the three buildings, the average building size is 32,500 square feet. With the Office Park, buildings went from three to broken up into five buildings, with a size reduction from an average of 54,000 square feet to 32,400 square feet. The applicant also added a covered fiberglass basketball court, as well as steel bridges connecting the three buildings of the Wellness Center. Also, staff had a chance to review public comment and better describe how parking would be allocated per lot, and I will describe that in a slide later, as well as the applicant had revised the phasing, and staff had a chance to work with county council to look at the phasing again and to put some conditions on, as far as how the project buildings are constructed, and I have a slide regarding that. With regard to these changes and how they affect SEQA, I'm just going to forward it. The final addendum issued in November describes the four-building option on the left, and the buildings are shaded in gray. The eight-building option is shown on the bottom right, and you'll see eight buildings instead of the four, retaining the same square footage. I wanted to point out that 189,000 square feet of office space was contained in these three buildings, I believe. Actually, you know what? I think there's, sorry, excuse me. 162,000 square feet of office slash research and development slash storage were contained in these buildings, as well as some business uses, 27,000 square feet within the bottom floor, front portion of the Wellness Center. That 27,000 square feet of business use is maintained over these two buildings, with a fully residential as well as supporting uses in Building Three here. So the area of these buildings were split up into these five buildings, but parking, as well as the buffers, all remain the same, and access remains generally the same. So it's really just building configuration, as well as, there was a reduction also in building height. So as I'd mentioned, project square footage, parking, and the wetland buffers have been maintained, so the project would not result in increased impacts to air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, climate change, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, mineral resources, noise, population, housing, recreation, transportation, and utilities, these are chapters of the EIR addendum. With regard to aesthetics, there is some change there. The building sizes have been reduced, similar to the original NPA project proposed, the project over nine buildings, so now there's eight buildings. There's also changes that resulted from the suggestions made by the Design Review Committee, which have been incorporated into this eight-building option, to be more consistent with the community, as well as to allow for further articulation and lower impact to the buildings in terms of massing. The visual simulations remain adequate. This description is also in your staff report. With regard to public services, the fire access might have changed slightly. The Coastside County Fire Protection District has reviewed the eight-building option, has preliminarily approved it according to conditions in the staff report. And then with regard to geology and soils, there's new information in terms of a second fault trench study, which reaffirmed the results of the first fault trench study of the addendum, that the Seal Cove Fault does not cross the project site. So I showed you this slide. As far as elevations, the full elevations are provided in staff report. I provided the color renderings here. The front portion of the office buildings along Airport Street would be 28 feet in height, would look similar to this, and the sides, rear, and interior elevations, this is just one of the elevations provided by the applicant, would be higher, would be 33 feet in height along the sides, the rear, and the interior. The Wellness Center buildings are all 28 feet in height, and would look, as this rendering shows. And then the applicant, Scott Holmes, also gave us a diagram of the covered basketball court, which would be located within the courtyard of the Wellness Center, as well as a revised color scheme. The color scheme really tries to accomplish what the Coastside Design Review Committee suggested in terms of narrowing the number of colors offered, and these are chosen from the previous color scheme. With regard to parking allocation, in response to public comment, staff allocated per condition number seven, a minimum number of parking spaces based on the lowest possible intensity use, which is storage and manufacturing uses, which requires a parking allocation of one space for every 2,000 square feet per our county parking regulations. So according to that ratio, every building would have at least the parking spaces for the lowest intensity use, which are roughly 18, 16, 5, 16, 15, sorry, not 5, 15. Yeah, so they're all based on the two, that one for every 2,000 square feet parking ratio. And then any additional parking spaces for more intense uses would have to be purchased through parking licenses. I should also say that the Wellness Center has been allocated 42 spaces. The business uses of, sort of below the Wellness Center, on the first ground floor of the Wellness Center, are allocated 14 spaces. So after the allocation of these spaces, you have 326 spaces left of the total 462 spaces offered on the north parcel, and those spaces would be allocated according to the uses that would occupy each building in the level of required parking. So just to break down parking, there would be 462 spaces offered for private uses on the north parcel, such as the Wellness Center and the Office Park. Forty-two of those would be the Wellness Center, 420 to the Office Park. On the south parcel, the applicant proposes to meet its 20% coastal access public parking requirement, which brings their coastal access minimum to 92 spaces on the south parcel, with a total parking of 554 over both sites. So this slide hopes to clarify the application of easements over the two parcels as required by the conditions of approval, and the colors aren't super clear here. In brown are, oops, sorry, excuse me. In brown along here shows easements for, an easement for conservation purposes along the wetland and the wetland buffers, not the entire buffer, just up to 50 feet, well, excluding the 50-foot edge, I guess, of the buffer. Within that 50-foot buffer, as discussed with the Coastal Commission, the applicant is allowed to farm that area, so that would be covered by an agricultural easement along the yellow 50-foot buffer area. In orange are, is an access easement over the common lot, Lot One, for, for parking by tenants and owners of the Office Park. So that would allow common use of this area, private access. And then in terms of public access, there would be an easement along the trail, the Class 1 10-foot trail along Airport Street, as well as over the public parking, 92 public parking spaces. And then in blue are drainage easements, where water would be allowed to flow under, or under, into gravel areas under the buildings. The buildings are built on piers, and gravel would be between those piers, and allow for infiltration of runoff. It should be noted, too, that the surfaces of the parking lot are also pervious and can drain, and would be covered also by a drainage easement. So this slide is intended to help with the understanding of the order of building construction. So I wanted to say that the applicant has proposed a phasing plan, which doesn't actually comply with the conditions of approval, or the development order as outlined in the draft development agreement. So this slide is overlaying over the proposed phasing plan provided by the applicant. So according, according to the development agreement, the conditions of approval, the order would go as this, for construction, Building Three of the Wellness Center would be constructed first, then Building Three, I'm sorry, One of the Wellness Center, then Building Two of the Wellness Center. So the further, the further Wellness Center building would be built first in order to allow a larger setback from the Pillar Ridge manufactured home community, and then the third building. Then the Office Park, in terms of the order of construction, it would be the frontmost buildings would be priority over the construction of the rear buildings. So Building A would go first, then Building B, C, the rear, just to cluster development with the existing buildings of the Wellness Center, and then D, and then E would be built. So that's simply the order. As far as timing, the timing required is, within one year, the applicant, sorry, the property owner would have to initiate wetland restoration, as well as construct the Class One Trail over the areas in red. Within three years, the property owner would need to complete, so there's initiation in the first year, and completion of the wetland restoration in the third year, and then within five years of, sorry, these years are taken from the effective date of project approval. So within five years of that date, Building Three, as well as 42, the required parking spaces necessary for the Wellness Center, would need to be constructed, along with the corresponding 20% of coastal access parking spaces, as well as landscaping along Airport Street, would provide screening for construction. Within 12 years, the applicant would complete all buildings of the Wellness Center. So just to make clear, all buildings of the Wellness Center would need to be completed prior to the construction of Buildings C, D, and E. However, Buildings A and B could be constructed prior to the full build-out of the Wellness Center, but Building One would need to be built first, sorry, Building Three. Let's see, and then within 15 years, the project would need to be completed as allowed by the development agreement. Sure. Yes.
So Building, Building One on the slide, not, which is Building Three?
Yes.
Would be done first. Where is the parking for, is that?
Oh, goodness. Okay. The parking is along here.
So can you go back to the other slide that you just had?
Uh, yes.
So, okay, then I see it being connected to the road way up there.
Right.
So how do you, so is that part of the lot being built, or just the roads being built?
The applicant can further describe, the Wellness Center would need to meet fire access requirements, and perhaps that was the intention of this. So it would need to meet access requirements, and parking spaces, as shown here, would be provided along there.
Yeah, so I'll go to the other slide.
Okay.
And you can see if I'm reading this right.
Uh huh.
It's hard to read. I can't see where the road and the parking is connected on Airport.
Right. In order to, the way that he has, the way that the applicant has drawn out the site plan, the road is quite, quite a ways out, and would have to be closer in, perhaps even provide a temporary road, depending on how many of the buildings are constructed. The minimum to allow access, fire access, and then parking and access would have to be clustered to the corresponding building under construction, as much as feasibly possible.
So it is possible, in the beginning years, there could be a temporary road, let's say, just for the sake of an argument, going through where Buildings B and C is.
Right.
And later that would be deconstructed and...
Right. The county wouldn't want to disturb a larger area than necessary for the construction taking place at that time. So there is a condition, and it's also in the development agreement, that parking needed for that, what's being constructed at that time, would need to be positioned as clustered and close to the building as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
So this slide summarizes the Coastal Commission's letter that was received and included in the staff report. Should be noted that the Coastal Commission has provided another letter this afternoon that's provided on the back table, and I won't be summarizing their points in this slide. So as described, as sort of summarized in the staff report as well, the Coastal Commission had concerns of whether the traffic report and the addendum covered impacts for an all-office use scenario, so if, if office uses were built to the maximum intensity, i.e. to use of all parking of the Office Park, that would equate to 84,000 square feet of office. Okay. So under that scenario, whether the traffic report would cover the impacts. And Gary Black, who is actually here, has, we've been corresponding over email, and he did confirm that the traffic report and the final addendum does cover sort of a mix of uses, including sort of an all-office use scenario, as well as, you know, lesser office, more research scenario, so it allows for some flexibility, which was envisioned in the project proposal. Another concern was what happens if all the project uses all the allocated water in the early phases of the project. Per condition number 85, the applicant, if they go over 15,500 GPD of water or wastewater use, they would need to obtain the approval of the utility providers and apply for a CDP amendment for that new water amount. The Coastal Commission had concerns regarding the size and scale of the project. I will discuss that in sort of the design review portion of this presentation. They had questions regarding density of development. It's staff's position that density, as it's used in the LCP, refers to dwelling units per acre. No dwelling units are proposed. Dwelling units are characterized by kitchen. However, I should state that the Coastal Commission, in their latest letter, could disagree with that interpretation. Other issues in the staff, in the comment letter received and included in the staff report were farming within the 150-feet wetland buffer, that's resolved by condition number 59, the submittal of a second fault trench report, which is something they had asked for, and that's been included, as well as limiting parking to supporting business use to 420 spaces, and that's been included as a condition of approval. As far as the action taken by the Design Review Committee in their... in their meeting on December 18th, which the Planning Commission specifically referred this project to them for their review and comment, they found that the project is fundamentally out of scale and out of character with the Princeton community, that presentation materials have repeatedly failed to include appropriate and comprehensive details and visualizations, and have not been completed to a reasonable professional standard, that the project lacks adequate design work at all levels, from schematic to detail, which should have been undertaken by a licensed design professional with substantial experience in projects of this scope, complexity, and community impact. Also, they found that while the applicant responded to some previously recommended design changes, the responses have not sort of come close to addressing the CDRC's concerns. As described in the staff report, notwithstanding these CDC, CDRC's findings, staff has determined that the project, as proposed and conditioned, complies with the Design Review District regulations. As outlined in the staff report, the project meets the permit application requirements for a design review permit. The design review standards actually call for a more conceptual plan that allows for revisions through the design review process. The project, staff finds, has complied with going through the CDRC review process, and staff finds that the applicant has, in good faith, implemented many of the suggestions of the CDRC. Specific standards, as far as the project complies with, are landscaping and providing a smooth transition from surrounding areas. The project buildings do not significantly obscure, detract from, or negatively affect the quality of views from Highway 1. The project preserves open space by clustering the buildings, and also the project has achieved a reduced scale through the 8-building option. As described in Condition Number 88, there's a list of additional modifications that the county is requiring, including that the property owner work with a licensed architect to achieve a simplification of the design of the buildings, as well as a design which unifies the architectural designs of the Wellness Center and the Office Park in a more unified way. To summarize, the Midcoast Community Council comments, their latest comment letter, they had some questions regarding the development restrictions of the South parcel, and I think they were concerned that the South parcel could allow some development. However, as shown in the easements map earlier, there are agricultural easements and conservation easements over that parcel which prevent any sort of construction development, as well as parking and other things on the South parcel. As far, they had some concerns regarding building scale and height. They had stated that the existing buildings, they cited specific buildings which ranged in height from 23 feet to 30 feet, and they specifically stated that those existing buildings have a maximum of two stories. The project buildings are also two stories. The maximum height is 28 feet for the Wellness Center, as well as 28 feet for the Office Park along Airport Street, and 33 feet for the rest of the Office Park. They had some concerns regarding the 4-feet-high propane deflection wall. That wall has now been modified by the applicant to not be a wall. So I'll have him describe that. It's going to be more of like a berm, an earth berm, or gravel berm of sorts. They had a concern regarding the trail on the east side of the Airport Street versus its location on the west side, per the site plan. Condition 66 allows for the trail to be located on either the west side or the east side of Airport Streets, subject to the approval of County Parks. County Parks had expressed in the past that they may want to locate the trail on the east side. So it does allow for that. They also express concern about the bridge over the drainage. Sorry, that they prefer the bridge to the K-rails that are being proposed. And the development agreement, as well as phasing, allows for the construction of K-rails, but requires the applicant to work with the Parks Department to obtain permitting for a bridge, bridge widening over the drainage. So the K-rail, we need to be able to allow for it early on because it protects pedestrians crossing from one parcel to the other parcel on Airport Street. However, as soon as permitting is acquired by the applicant in the Parks Department, that would be replaced by the bridge widening. There's, you know, fish and wildlife permitting and other permitting. They were concerned about visitors to the Wellness Center not being factored into the traffic study. There's Condition 5J requires visitors to stick to non-commute visiting travel times. As far as the jobs housing imbalance, the MCC state that the number of jobs would only sort of spur additional housing needs and infrastructure needs. However, that was looked at in the 2010 DEIR, where those jobs are likely to be filled with those already commuting over to the coast, I'm sorry, over to the bayside from the coast, based on unemployment data. Sorry, I think that's employment data, perhaps. They had some concerns regarding roll-up doors in the courtyards. Courtyards are, have been described as sort of pedestrian courtyards, but so why are the roll-up doors along the interior? And the applicant explains that those are for forklift access only, and that has been made a condition of approval. Let's see, the MCC had expressed concern that the EIR addendum would need to be updated. The staff report itself provides a sequin analysis on Page 28, and it supplements the addendum per the memo that's on the table and also provided to the commission. So this slide summarizes the Committee for Green Foothills's comment letter. They had some questions regarding the completeness level of the vesting tentative map. The vesting tentative map consists of the plans submitted and labeled as vesting tentative map in the staff report, so it's actually more than one page, more than just the page labeled specifically vesting tentative map. There's details with regard to utilities. The floor plans provide the lot dimensions. The grading plans provide the finished contours. So many of the comments and the details cited to be missing by Committee for Green Foothills are found in those pages. Also, staff is adding Condition Number 40, which I will show you at the end of this presentation, that requests additional detail on the recorded final map and parcel map. The Committee for Green Foothills found a typo of 62 spaces for coastal access. 92 public coastal access spaces are labeled accurately on other pages. So just on the site plan, there was a typo. The Committee for Green Foothills recommends story polls. As I had stated on November 12th, story polls were used in 2010. They had sort of an effect of sort of a field of polls where the eyes sort of look right past the polls. It wasn't effective, in staff's opinion. So visual simulations have been provided in the addendum. And then the Committee for Green Foothills also stated that they agreed with certain new conditions that were added. So these next slides kind of summarize changes to conditions to address some of the public comments that were received. So staff recommends revision of Condition Number 5 to read, "The property owners of both Wellness Center and Office Park shall construct and maintain the project and project details as approved by the county and California Coastal Commission, if applicable." Scratching, "described in the certified EIR over the life of the project, including but not limited to the following features." So that, it's just that first paragraph that's being amended. And staff wanted to give the Coastal Commission a little more leeway in terms of perhaps changes to the project, should it go to the Coastal Commission. And staff is also recommending amending Condition 5N, which is just under 5, and then there's A, B, C, D, and goes to N. With regard to vehicular use of all courtyard areas, that's prohibited, with the exception of emergency vehicles and forklifts, to address that public comment. Staff recommends revision to Condition Number 7 to scratch that the property owner needs to allocate parking spaces exactly per the table. There was very specific parking spaces per lot. However, the lots have changed just slightly from the four-building scenario to the eight-building scenario, and staff wanted to tie that back to the county parking requirements of one space for every 2,000 square feet. So allowing for some changes to the lot size, but still complying with the parking regulations. With regard to Condition Number 60, staff recommends a revision to list out additional items needed on the parcel map and final map, including description of easements, who they're benefiting, areas of the easement, the boundaries, their purpose, as well as, the Committee for Green Foothills had pointed out that there's an agricultural line that needs to be relocated. The proposed location would need to be shown. All access bulbs, shown on the site plan, access bulbs can sometimes cross property lines, and they should really be located on Lot 1 of the North parcel. We would need meets and bounds for all the property lines. We would need an air-space map for the business condominiums. There's two notes that should be added. Per Condition 73, "All land within the approved building envelope that remains undeveloped at the end of the authorized construction period," the proposed construction period is 15 years, "shall be retained in open space and farmed, and included in the easement required by Condition Number 58, which is the agricultural easement pursuant to an easement amendment." So while the applicant would be required to put these areas into easements, the areas outside of the development footprint, into easements, those areas that are not eventually developed would be added to those easements at the end of the construction period. And then there would be a note regarding that that really the conditions of approval apply to the operation and implementation of this project for the life of the project, so that there is full disclosure to property owners that they are subject to these conditions of approval. Staff also recommends revision to Condition Number 88 to further break up parking by adding landscaping along all driveways and bulbs to further visual separate, to provide further visual separation of all parking areas through the introduction of significantly-sized, east-west-oriented landscaping focal points. And let me go back to the site plan to show you what I mean. So these, sorry, these areas, these sort of east-west drive aisles, bulbs, could be further landscaped. The landscaping right now is very north-south oriented. So these east-west planting areas would provide sort of the separate parking areas. And this is in response to a public comment that, and really to align the project more with the design review standards with regard to large expanses of paved areas being discouraged. So staff found a need to further strengthen that landscaping requirement. Let's see. So there's a note, a general note, at the top of the conditions of approval that basically say that the project needs to meet all of these parameters, and where there's a conflict between the approved project and meeting that parameter, the project must be reduced. And it was specific in terms of saying the building areas cannot be relocated to another part of the project site, but staff wanted to add parking areas also cannot be relocated. So if you add additional landscaping that conflicts with the parking space, that parking space should be eliminated, and correspondingly, the use that requires that parking space. Staff also, so just a couple more slides. Staff also recommends a revision to finding 1 per the memo that was provided, adding the staff reports, the environmental review contained in the staff report with regard to the comparison between the four-building option and the eight-building option, to supplement the addendum. So the Planning Commission, should it choose to make the finding that the addendum has been reviewed by the Planning Commission and is complete, correct, and adequate, we would recommend the language to say that the addendum, along with the information contained in the staff report for this meeting, which supplements the addendum, has been reviewed by the Planning Commission and is complete, correct, and adequate. So the second revised finding is finding 2M. There was an error pointed out by one of the public comments that this says Capistrano Road when it should say Cypress Avenue, with regard to mitigation measure at Cypress and Highway 1. So that concludes staff's presentation. Staff's recommending, at this time, that the Planning Commission certify the addendum, along with accompanying documents, approve the requested permits, and make the required findings, subject to the conditions of approval, as revised in this presentation, subject to the revised findings also in this presentation, and recommend to the board supervisors approval of the draft development agreement. And staff is available for any questions.
Wow, thanks. So do we have any questions for staff? No? Would you like to start?
Today we got a letter from the California Coastal Commission outlining their latest concerns. And one of them, the biggest ones. It's, I'll try, I'll hold it closer, maybe that will work better. I feel like I'm eating it. Just dealing with the scale, size, density, and community character. And in talking, the way, you know, the size of the buildings, the size of the lots, the number of square feet. And, I mean, I only got this letter at 2 o'clock, so I'm still working my way through what is meaning, all the subtleties behind it, and reading between the lines what they're also saying. But I do have some concerns in how they are classifying everything in blocks of 500 square feet, 5,000 to 10,000 square feet. And I presume those are just single buildings that they've done, as opposed to, I know she didn't like to use the word density because density includes a kitchen, but there is a ratio of built space to the lot size. And that is a, substitute the word for density, that's a certain density in itself. And one of the things I do worry about is I don't have any way to really evaluate this to lot size and building size and stuff like that. The second thing is, if I read this specifically as they wrote it, it sounds like they like to maintain things that are sprawled out. That was very good for things in the '50s, 1960s, some of the '70s. But what most of the communities really reject, what they really want, because when you sprawl out a commercial center or anything like that, you get lots of stuff between buildings, and it becomes like a dumping ground, and it becomes, occupies a bigger area, and you don't have places where you can maximize green space and stuff like that. And do you have any reaction to that? Like I said, I'm still working my way through it.
I think staff appreciates the amount of research that went into this. I think staff appreciates the amount of research that went into this. It's interesting to note that there are buildings in the area of comparable size. I mean, a majority of the buildings are not, but there are buildings also of comparable size. I think the takeaway from this point is they're encouraging the county to consider reduced scale alternatives. And the staff report states that the project does meet the design review standards in terms of size and scale, particularly the eight-building alternative, which reduces scale further. However, the planning commission feels that, you know, you can direct staff to craft more specific alternatives if you feel that's necessary.
I'm still trying to get my head around what they're trying to, you know, are they looking for something that's more sprawled out, or, or, you know, like me, I'm looking forward to make sure more things are green, there's more green space, more walking space, more enjoyable space.
I think their intention is, I would think, is to cluster and minimize, with regard to this project, minimize the area of disturbance. But I think their study of the existing buildings really, really just focused on size versus whether they're sprawled out or not.
Okay, because there could be consequences that are not desirable. And that's what I worry about.
Zoe?
I think, let me just see if this is on. Okay, good. I think what the coastal commission's getting at Fred is that two of the proposed buildings have a footprint between 10,000 and 15,000 square feet. And what they're saying here is that only 1% of all the buildings in Princeton are of that scale. Six of the buildings are even larger than that, and 1.5% of all the buildings in Princeton are that. So I think they're getting at this concept that both the coast side design review committee, the committee for Greenfoot Hills, and the midcoast community council have been continuing to reiterate, and that is that the scale of this project is far larger than the surrounding community, the scale of the buildings. So that's how I read it.
Yep.
Okay, so I do have a few, I do have a few questions. Okay, I think, still a little feedback. Okay, just a few questions on the staff report. So one of the things that my, one of my big questions just overall, and I think this will kind of lead into some of the questions I'll have throughout the evening, is we have some plans that were drafted by George Mu and Associates, and it looks like the date on these plans are January 10, 2015, which postdates a lot of the comments that we had received. And so in going through all the material, and believe me, I've read everything, it's hard for me to match up if someone's comments are now somehow addressed in later revisions. And so I spent my time trying to figure out, I read through, you know, I made lists of all the different entities who commented, and I tried to figure out if their concerns had been addressed in later changes. So one of the questions I have is condition 88 in the conditions of approval, and I think you heard this earlier today from me in an email, was I think that some of the changes or requirements in condition 88 of the conditions of approval are reflected on the plans. And is it the intention that with, I think, the revised conditions of approval that you just put up, that subsequent plans would fully implement condition 88?
Yes.
And that's the one that covers design review?
Yes, I think, I think the applicant partially addressed some of these requirements, and then others were not, were either new or not fully addressed. So I had left them in there in order to ensure that the final product, when it, you know, should this get to the building permit application stage, to make sure that these are the conditions that we started out with, and they would still all have to be met.
Okay. And then, so I think, and this is just kind of for the folks who are going to comment this evening, I will ask if you have reviewed the January 10, 2015, if it changes any of the comments that you previously submitted to us in writing, that would be very helpful for us to know. So in comparing the conditions of approval to the development agreement, because I think for our purposes, the legally, you know, for the county and I don't know necessarily the planning commission, but for the legally operative documents, I believe those would be the findings of fact, conditions of approval, and the development agreement. So what I try to do is make sure that the development agreement and the conditions of approval were consistent with each other. And I just had one question on the, there was, in the conditions, recommended conditions of approval number two, paragraph two, it talked about some, essentially, if the subdivision is recorded but no construction or grading is initiated within the CDP permit expiration date of two years, and the CDP is not extended, then the CDB expires and the project grading construction authorized by the permit cannot take place. Is that consistent with the 15 years that the development agreement has in place? Because I thought, and I'm trying to parse through it, was there was an understanding that the development agreement allowed certain periods to be extended up to 15 years?
Yes.
Would this be one of them?
Yes. This is the typical term of a CDP. Should the board either decide not to approve the development agreement, should, you know, if the development agreement was never adopted, this would stand?
Got it. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, because you started out by saying if there is no development agreement, but in this case, we do have one, so if there is the development agreement, then that paragraph is not applicable.
Right. It's just the typical expiration clause.
Okay. And then, I did have some questions about the easement on the south parcel. So I think that your slide was very helpful in addressing that question, because I think there was concern just in general about potential future development of the south parcel. And I did, and forgive me, I can't remember, I think it was in the development agreement that basically said essentially there would be no development. If anything, it would be purchased by someone to offset carbon credits. And so the, I guess what I'm trying to confirm is that the easement, conservation easement covers the wetland area, and then the other areas would not potentially be developed because there's not zoning, or they would already be part of the parking, and...
The zoning would remain. However, the easements would dedicate those areas for very specific use, such as agriculture or wetland restoration. So that would preclude development.
Got it. Okay. So that, between the zoning and the easement, that those two elements operate to preclude development on the south parcel?
Well, it's really the easements themselves. The zoning would remain the same at waterfront. So if you just looked at zoning, it would really allow other uses, but those easements would preclude any other development other than for the sole purpose of either conservation or agriculture. And then, then the easement, the access, the public access easement over the coastal parking spaces would keep that area in terms of, you know, for public access. And then the boat storage is a particular use that would be allowed should this permit be issued. And then any new use would be subject to zoning permitting, things like that.
So, right. So, right. So the conservation easement is sort of in that light brown on the, I guess you would say, sort of the lower left to upper left hand side?
Yes. We could include the boat storage area in a conservation easement of sorts which allows only sort of parking, impervious pavement, that kind of thing, to extend the development limits to that area.
Right. And I don't think that's an insurmountable issue. I, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that whatever, whatever restrictions there were, they could address the concern about development on the south parcel. Okay. And then I did just raise a couple of questions on the development agreement. There was just a couple of tiny things I noticed. There was one reference to, on page eight, section 3.3.2, landscaping along Airport Street. And this is the one that says developer will complete landscaping along Airport Street, frontage of both parcels, and areas located within the footprint of improvements described in sections 3.3.2, or 5.3.3.2 and 5.3.3.2. Which, should it just say this section?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. And then the other thing was the modifications, was that per section 10 rather than section 11?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
There was some changing of the section numbers last minute, so.
Yeah, and that totally happens. But I usually go back and try and make sure that if it's the legally binding document, we, yeah, because you do change sections around. I just wanted to make sure that was correct. Okay, so the other question was, in tracking things between the conditions of approval and the development agreement, is the phasing consistent now between the conditions of approval, development agreement, and the slide that you showed us this evening?
Yes.
Those all three are consistent?
Yes. The phasing is described in the phasing portion of the development agreement as well as condition 73 of attachment A.
Okay. And those are consistent with the slide that you presented?
Yes.
We received some correspondence late this afternoon, and I might not be able to put my hand on it immediately, because we had a pile when we came in. But there was a question from, hold on, maybe I can find it, about the impact on wind that any of the buildings would create for the airport, and whether or not that that would be a future concern.
That was addressed in the staff report, I believe, for the November 12 hearing. And basically, the wind was looked at, I have to look back at the staff report to refresh my memory, but I can, I can prepare, I can state something. But that was prepared. It was looked at, and it was not considered a significant impact. It was included, some discussion of wind impacts was included in both the 2010 EIR, as well as the addendum, as well as in the staff report for November 12.
Right. I remembered it in the 2010 EIR, but I guess what I, you know, I read those as a layperson. So in your opinion, the analysis was done in the 2010 EIR sufficient to address the concern that was raised in the letter that we received just this afternoon?
Absolutely.
Okay. The other question was, I think there was a concern raised about FAA, and I do believe someone commented last time in one of our meetings about that not being an expert from the FAA. I do realize that there was analysis done with regard to that.
Yes.
And, and I saw that in your, your report this evening. So as far as any concerns by the FAA, I assume we've analyzed through all of the EIR process and any concerns that have been raised, and I can't remember exactly what they were last time when we were here, but that, that those have been adequately addressed?
Yes. The new airport land use compatibility plan was adopted by CCAG with new imaginary surface layers. There's a, there's a, basically a ceiling for development over areas of the airport, near, surrounding the airport. And staff ran, I ran, the new, the project heights for this new eight-building option against the GIS system that was prepared with that layer, sort of incorporated into that software, and they more than clear those surfaces by 10 feet or more. And then as far as complying with, there's noise concerns expressed by the FAA. There's land use concerns provided for the FAA specifically with regard to placement of residential uses so close to the airport that perhaps could later lead to noise concerns. Certain noise complaints, which could affect the operation of the airport in the future. Those issues have all been described in the addendum and conditions of approval, including the mitigation measure for navigation easement, as well as other mitigation measures to locate openings of the bedrooms as far from the airport as possible to reduce noise, are retained in the conditions of approval.
Yeah, and I saw the concern about the noise, and to be honest with you, I thought that was addressed through the development agreement as well, and the...
The noise barrier.
Well, that the occupants would, there's a requirement that they would have to be put on notice, that that is a condition that they are essentially coming to, not that it's coming to them.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
There is a concern also in the coastal commission about the water. Last time we had the gentleman from the water district here, if I could paraphrase, what I heard was he's in the enviable positioning of having an excess of water. Now, my understanding, most of the water is groundwater, and there is now, since that time, new state law on management of groundwater. Does that impact anything that we should be worried about?
I don't believe so. He's recently reconfirmed MWSD's ability to provide the amount of water required by the project. There's something in excess of like 50,000 GPDs under capacity, as well as it should be stated that the wellness center is priority use, and would be grabbing sort of from a different pot than the office park for water. There's a, there's set-asides that MWSD has to reserve for...
I just want to be, in regard to new legislation on groundwater, does that impact anything that was presented?
I don't believe so.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay. Just to kind of also confirm along the way of the water, the gentleman that was here last time, he, I believe that he reassured that there was enough water. But that goes along with the sewer. I believe that there is enough capacity in the system for that, right? And I'm sure I can get my answer a little bit later.
There's a, there's a letter in the staff report that, where GSD confirms adequate wastewater capacity. Also Clemens is here from Montero Water, and perhaps he can answer that question more specifically with regard to the state law.
I had a couple of questions. Back to the airport land use compatibility plan. I was reading in Plan Princeton where they were talking about the runway protection zone and the inner approach departure zone being the two with the highest accident risk. And I believe that those two zones both overlay this project. But I haven't seen a map yet which indicates whether the current iteration of this project is entirely outside of those two high-risk zones.
We received that concern as a comment during the addendum period, and there is a specific response in the final addendum with regard to those zones. So if you, like, I can look that up.
No, my question really is, we haven't, I haven't seen a map that shows the overlay with this current project, which I don't believe is the same one that you're referring to. I mean, it's changed now. So...
The heights have been reduced, but the siting, the siting of those buildings are in the same location with regard to the airport.
Okay.
With a little bit of a change, but it is, the four-building option already moved a little bit closer to the airport than the original NPA project. So the location of the buildings now would be covered by the analysis of the final addendum, which describes its, its location relative to those zones.
Let's see, another question. Has Cal Fire or the coast side protection...
Can you please project your voice into your microphone?
Sure.
Okay. We got it. We got it. Thank you very much.
Has Cal Fire or the coast side fire protection district looked at the most recent iteration? And do we have a comment letter for them, or is there somebody from?
Mark Mar-Dragon should be here. Also, he did, he was, he was sent a copy of the plan, and he has indicated to me verbally that, that he's reviewed the plans and that he's fine with them at a preliminary level. But he can answer questions specifically.
Okay. Do you have any, any other things to add to this? No?
The work company continues to state that they have had good work with Mike and Sarah. So as long as there's adequate work for fire protection, the final design...
Sir, could you please come up to the mic and project your voice?
I'm sure that's not a problem.
Did you have that sound in the background as you're coming up, like specifically then?
Yeah.
Your entree?
My name is Mark Mondray, I'm the Fire Marshal for San Mateo County and Coastside Fire. I've reviewed the latest revisions. I have no concerns with them. My biggest concern from the initial part of this project has always been water. And the water company continues to say they can supply it. So as long as they can supply it, there'll be little tweakings as whatever is final, but they won't affect the project itself. It's more stuff, where am I going to put the fire hydrants and stuff of that nature? And that comes down to the final, as they set these things in, will be, that will be determined. I couldn't tell you right now where some of this minor stuff will be in, but the biggest point is, do I have the water for fire suppression? And they continually tell me they do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Another question has to do with the Committee for Greened Foothills' concerns about the maps.
I can't hear you.
Sorry, trying to speak up here. I would like to address the Committee for Greened Foothills' concerns about the incompleteness and the inadequacy of the vesting tentative map and the tentative parcel map. You went through this in your presentation, and you're convinced that what we had in front of us, or some combination, I guess, that the maps that we received on the 10th cover all of the Committee for Greened Foothills' concerns?
The maps, I compare the data on the maps to the requirement of the county subdivision regulations for vesting tentative map. It meets the requirements, those requirements. The condition, the conditions of approval, the one that I had revised to address these comments, are the result of communications between county staff and Department of Public Works who had similar sort of details that they saw were lacking on the plans. So as conditioned with the data that's currently on there and the data being required by the condition of approval, that vesting tentative map would comply with the county's subdivision regulations, which is, which is, which is the, I guess, the, you know, the baseline for the Committee for Greened Foothills' comment.
I guess I would ask County Council whether it is standard to have maps brought into compliance after approval of a project?
The conditions relate not to the vesting tentative map, but to the parcel and final map. So the requirement is not to amend the vesting tentative map, it's prior to recordation of the parcel map. So this is the map that's, that could be approved by the planning commission, but in order to actually carve out the project parcels, to actually carry out the subdivision, you'd have to record what's called a parcel map for the south parcel and a final map for the north parcel, and that condition puts, requires additional information be put on those maps, not the map that you're approving today. And it is typical that the, that the parcel map is a bit differing in terms of it needs to meet sort of technical requirements that the vesting tentative map doesn't have to. So they do vary. They can vary.
Okay. My last question has to do with the most recent letter from the Coastal Commission, which has some very substantive issues in it which have not been addressed by the staff report tonight. And indeed, the Coastal Commission went through the staff report and continued to raise a number of issues. And I'm wondering at this point, given that probably very few people in the audience have had a chance to look at this, I know my fellow commissioners probably haven't either had time to study what is a very complex document. How customary is this, and how do, how does one, as a planning commissioner, or how would you recommend we handle this?
It's not, can you hear me? It's not all that unusual where the commission is sending comments at this stage. I think we need to understand that they didn't get a copy of our staff report like they did late last week, and they have to go through their internal review process. So the circumstances are such that they provided their comments to us, I believe as quickly as I thought possible. I have been through the comments and believe that our staff report does address many of them. And if it's the pleasure of the commission, I can walk through the theme of the comments in general in an effort to respond, and you can evaluate whether or not that's adequate or if you need more information in order to refer us.
I think I would appreciate it if you would go through the commission's most recent letter. Yep?
Okay.
Please, thank you.
So I'm going to keep it at a high level because there's a lot of detail to view there, but with respect to size, scale, density, and the community character, they did provide a helpful map at the conclusion of their letter, which I think is useful to refer to. And they're comparing it to the Princeton area near the water primarily, and as you can see, the circumstances of the lots are quite different in the Princeton community. The lots are comprised of generally 5,000 square foot lots. And similarly, in the adjacent pillar ridge community, you have very small lots. And so the result of that lot pattern is you do get smaller buildings, but at a very high density. There's a lot of buildings per acre. In this case, we have lots that are under the zoning eligible to be subdivided into lots as small as 5,000, like Princeton. However, in this case, the project has made a concerted effort to come up with a design that will be most protective of the coastal resources. And so in staff's opinion, the proposed configuration of the project, while different from the pattern of development in Princeton, is what is appropriate to be protective of coastal resources and to meet the project objectives. Furthermore, I think the applicant has made an effort to create building designs that are compatible with building designs in Princeton. While they might be larger in terms of square footage, they are comparable in terms of height and also in the architectural style. So we believe that we fulfilled our LCP requirements with respect to density and community character. Moving on to project uses and phasing, I believe that Mr. Leong's presentation provides clarity regarding the way in which this project is expected to be carried out. I think one of the commission's concerns is what happens if we reach the maximum before the end of the 15-year term? And if that would be the case, those areas would remain undeveloped unless and until they receive the necessary permit amendments and approvals. So as Mr. Leong described, at the conclusion of the maximum 15-year build-out period, anything that's undeveloped would be put in a conservation easement. And in the interim, should they reach the maximum with regard to utilities or parking supply, then those areas would remain undeveloped less than until the permits were amended. With regard to public services, we've discussed already the availability of water and wastewater treatment capacity. And I think one of their concerns has to do with whether or not the project reserves water capacity at this point in time. To reserve the water capacity for the entire project would mean that applicant would need to purchase the full amount of water connection, which at this point, it's unknown whether or not the project will be built out to full capacity. So the way we handle it is that at each and every building permit stage, we need to confirm that the capacity remains, and if they have made the necessary purchases of the required connections before they move forward with construction.
If I could ask a question here, do we require any applicant to reserve water for any projects?
A typical scenario is that an applicant will come in, and at the point of application, we will ask for evidence that the district has capacity to serve the project, but the final validation that they have purchased and secured the necessary connections would refer to the document statement. They're also concerned about the traffic impacts and the traffic study, which, you know, as Camille described, we stand by the analysis that's been completed throughout the environmental review process. And if we need to dig deeper into those details, I'd be happy to, based on whatever specific questions you may have in that regard. The fourth point has to do with water and sanitary district capacity, which we have spoken about already, as well as the reservation capacity. And then with regard to point number five, have the parking lot planters approaching into the 150-foot wetland buffer? We will maybe clear in a hall subsequent building permit approvals that you can't install those, and the easement would not be given that either, so that would be a necessary clarification in the final landscape plan. So that's my very high-level response, and I can provide further detail upon your request.
May I continue? So one of the things I did have questions about in the traffic analysis, they state very clearly here that in further examination of other recent traffic studies conducted in the area of the proposed projects, commission staff has found that these other studies concluded a higher level of service at intersections and on roadway segments, including the city of Half Moon Bay, et cetera. So they specifically indicate that this traffic study that was applied to this project looked at intersections but did not look at roadway segments, which is one of the problems I see was addressed in several of the comment letters, that mitigations for impacts on Cypress in particular have not been included because they weren't really, it wasn't part of the study. So the Coastal Commission concludes that there are more severe roadway capacity constraints than what has been evaluated in the proposed process, project. Do you have any thoughts about, you know, how we have several now relatively fresh traffic analyses, and they have competing or differing conclusions?
So the Coastal Commission staff actually has brought up or requested segment analysis in the past, and that was a comment received for the addendum. There was a response to it in the final addendum that basically said that segment analysis isn't necessary due to perhaps the number of signals already along Highway One. I will let Gary Black, he's here from Hexagon, he's the traffic consultant for the EIR. I'll let him answer that question more specifically.
Thank you, Gary Black with Hexagon. Yes, we did have that comment from the Coastal Commission for the addendum, and as Camille said, that was the, our response was that often when we do segment analysis, it's for sections of roadway that have a long run without any important intersections that would tend to interrupt the flow, and this particularly applies to Highway One. But in this section of Highway One, there are many signalized intersections which we did analyze in the study, and there's also an unsignalized intersection that we analyzed. And those control the flow on Highway One and also control the flow on the other roadways. There are various intersections that we did study, and that's where the, any constraints would show up. With regard to Cypress in particular, the county traffic study guidelines do not have any standards, shall we say, for roadway segments, but for the operation of intersections and recognition that that's where constraints happen. We're not aware of any, though there are issues with Cypress being narrow in some places and perhaps not up to an ideal design standard, but in terms of the actual capacity of the roadway, which is what we analyze under SEQA, there's plenty of capacity on Cypress and all the other roads in the area from a physical standpoint.
For bikes and pedestrians and cars?
For cars is what the traffic study addresses. Bike, bikes share the roadway, it's hard to say whether that's a capacity issue or not. And for pedestrians, clearly that one section of Cypress, I think that there's been some letters about, does not have sidewalks or pathways or any sort of accommodation for pedestrians. But in the case of this particular project, it's not judged that this project would add any pedestrians to that section of Cypress, and therefore there would not be a nexus to require an improvement at that location as a result of this project. This project would clearly add traffic to Cypress, but the experience of the pedestrian in our industry is more related to the design of the facility rather than the number of cars that are on the facility.
Mr. Black, did you also look at the roads in the harbor? So in other words, there's basically two ways in and out of this project, and one is Cypress and the other is going down through the harbor with the roads that are very narrow and, you know, kind of not well-marked, et cetera. Was that part of your analysis?
Yes, we did include those roads and many intersections in that area. We did traffic counts, we evaluated how they're operating, yes.
And again, bikes and pedestrians weren't part of that analysis?
Well, again, as I said before, the bikes share the road, that's a typical arrangement. We don't, we can't really say, oh, it's not good if the bikes share the road because that's what happens, you know, 98% of the time. And for pedestrians, we did, we did not evaluate that there would be a large pedestrian demand between this project and the harbor area. We did comment on the need for pedestrian, better pedestrian connections to the bus stop, where we judged that there would be some pedestrian demand there. And the project, we did include a recommendation for a sidewalk there, which the project includes to have a sidewalk to the nearest bus stop.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all for now, thank you.
Okay. Everyone good for the moment? Okay, great. I have a feeling, Heather, we've got some speakers.
Mr. Chair, we do have requests to speak from 34 people today, and I believe the accent for the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes. My apologies. Wait, come on up.
I'll just change the PowerPoint over, that'll take me about 60 seconds probably. And is there a timer for the event?
Oh, 15 minutes, I think we should do it.
A lot of the issues that I have in this, PowerPoint's been covered pretty well by the county, so I'm going to skip through issues that maybe haven't been. The, one of the things, just on the tail end of the bike pedestrian discussion, the county has a really excellent bike plan, and I don't think Cypress is considered one of the streets for either bikes or pedestrians. There's some other alternatives and trails that are already installed. The, let's see here, technology, there we go, okay. Well, this is me, I talked about myself last time, I've been a civil engineer for, it's probably been more than 36 years, every time I do this presentation, it gets to be longer. The schedule, let's see, let's see, you know, we've actually tried to stick to the goals of the original project and the NPA, and it has been, it's been a bit of a track race. It's changed quite a bit since June, and each one of these changes takes 100 or 200 hours to finish up, but we've been able to stay ahead of it. You can tell by getting the drawings out just by the 10th. We have an excellent architect that's on board who's done a lot of commercial facilities in Lake Tahoe, all of Oakland East Bay, so I've worked with him before in the past, he's a great guy. East Bay, so I've worked with him before in the past, he's a great guy. And a big goal was to meet the Coastal Commission requirements, and I wanted to, let's see, point out a few things that I might go ahead to the grading plan. What they, again, we did a lot of geological studies, the last trench was a 400-foot-long, 10-foot-deep trench, fascinating geology, but no indication of any movement within the last 10 years, or 10,000 years, pardon me, that's a little longer. And the landscape plan, a little hard to see in the picture, but we've worked closely with, well, it's initially, the main part of the restoration is, was designed by Dr. Lee, Dr. Fiedler, these are two people that have done a number of restoration projects on the coast side. They also are associates with a senior coastal commission ecologist, Dr. Dixon, who actually looked at that, likes their work. We aren't doing any construction in any wetlands, it's always, it's restoration plus 100 feet beyond the known wetlands. We worked a little bit with people from the MCC on the additional selection of plants, and I think we're closer, there are a couple of plants that they'd like us to replace, but we're, again, we're committed to just working with the community and all the regulatory people, including the Coastal Commission's comments that are, that came today. They all look like they're addressable, and again, biologically, we're much better, but I wanted to, before I lose myself here, this is one of the grading plans, it's kind of hard to see it, but if you look at what we've done through the CDRC process, we've come up with what looked like small city blocks surrounded by alleys and streets. Most of those alleys and street areas are about the same width as some of the ones in Princeton. And if you look at the lines on those buildings, the intent is to be able to subdivide it into lots that are about 1,500 square feet and build it into the whole. So they're clustered buildings that, if you look at the Coastal Commission's red pictures, the lots on, in Princeton, all have zero lot line requirements, and they form clusters similar to these sized buildings, and some of them quite a bit larger. And I can kind of bounce through that also. The, again, great wetlands, met all the tsunami requirements and earthquake requirements. The traffic issues, Gary Black's an excellent traffic engineer, he's the only one that's worked on this project, he's done about six reports to date, and it's, traffic is, it's a very rigorous and defined science. There's not a tremendous amount of flexibility or interpretation, they follow guidelines that are established by the Association of Traffic Engineers, and they all generate pretty much, a good traffic engineer will be pretty much what any good traffic engineer generates, there's not a lot of opinion that goes into it. Again, you've seen the reduction, the project's about 30% smaller than it was the last time around. And the size is kind of arbitrary, what that size would actually be, but again, this is hard to look at, but if you look at the building selections, the upper drawings, and you have larger drawings in your collection, really look at the faces of small city blocks with multiple different buildings that make that up, with the large potential that each one of those buildings will be separately owned. So it's kind of, it's, you know, it's basically, the project's clustered into five small commercial blocks that are about, maybe a quarter the size of the smallest block in Princeton. So it has the same appearance and similar-sized building clusters as Princeton. And again, let's hop through it, we used, one of the CDRC requirements was to limit the number of building designs, so we basically picked three that most of it, most of the buildings are variations of these three, rather than 3,000. And you can see the lower right-hand corner, it has a flat side because that's built right up against the property line, and the next building will be right up against that. So Princeton, in some respects, isn't fully developed, and it will, most of it, if you look at what's between the buildings, it's a lot of abandoned cars, a lot of odds and ends, different fishing things, it has a lot of potential to continue to grow. So I think, just like us, we're not going to build the whole thing in one year either, it just, it's similar to Princeton with that kind of an evolving development based on the value of the property. And looking at this, again, very hard to see because of the lighting, but you can compare our building sizes to, you know, like, the whole collection of commercial buildings is equaled about this sized block, and you can see, again, at the Coastal Commission thing, all these buildings are already run together, even though they might have separate owners, they're right up to the lot lines. And our density has, we have a lot of open space around our buildings and clustered small blocks of buildings inside. So I think we're going to meet with the Coastal Commission, and we've been, I've taken an attitude that anything they ultimately ask for, we've been able to deliver, so I consider that still very feasible in our future discussions with them. And let's see, there are a number of subdivisions that are larger, I listed 18, there's probably 20, a couple of them that aren't on there, that are all built within Half Moon Bay, that are bigger than Big Wave. The, I ran through a couple of buildings last time, that's right above us, it's a building similar height. Our buildings are, like the Wellness Center is 22-feet to 28-foot range, it's not all 28-feet, it's variable heights. Most of Princeton is between, you know, 15 and 35-feet, and most of the bigger buildings are larger. We have, again, the Office Park is maximum 28, but it varies, in the front, it varies from 24 to 28, in the back, it varies from probably 24 to 33. So there, there is a lot of relief in the buildings, and that's basically how we're trying to make it look like Princeton. And then some of the other buildings, again, this is the Candle Factory, it's coupled with the next larger building, which is about twice the size of any of our buildings, but all of this little cluster of buildings is similar to the buildings we're proposing. Again, the Pillar Ridge Mobile Home Park, pretty dense, all one-story, but it slopes up and some of the buildings are a little higher, so the elevations end up being similar to the Wellness Center buildings. And, you know, twice as nice, it's typical mezzanine one-story thing, that's about, you know, it's about 10,000 square feet, our buildings are a little bit larger, twice, but if you break them down, they're in 2,500-foot pieces also. And surrounding, this is the continuous line of buildings that are larger, it goes off to around here someplace, that are larger in size than the clusters of our buildings. And again, this is another example, these warehouses run continuously, this warehouse runs continuously, that's larger than any of the buildings we're proposing. And these are, you know, this plus the ones on the other side. There's vacant space that ultimately will fill up as zoning allows and as the desirability of the development occurs. And this is one of the buildings we're looking at for our design, but it's nailed together with three other large commercial buildings, similar density to what we're proposing. So I don't think we're out of scale by any means. Again, this is the Giant Hotel, it's larger in size, height, and square footage than all of our buildings combined. These houses, coupled with the buildings they're bumped into, are typical to the, it's a live-work situation, it's not housing, but it's, they're similar in size to, you know, what we're proposing. So I think we can sit down with the Coastal Commission and discuss this, we're open to their suggestions, but I don't think comparing our 20-acre lot to a bunch of 50-foot lots is easy as just doing that. Again, this building, it's not a very good picture, but it's larger than any of our buildings, and it's connected to two or three other buildings. These are in town, they're, this development's the same size as Big Wave, this one's same, larger residential than our park. And this is just the beginning of Leslie, Leslie Village, I guess, is a senior housing. Now it's, the whole complex is much larger than Big Wave. This commercial center down by Wave Crest is larger than Big Wave. Fire station's the same size as the Wellness Center. This residential section, along with another one south of town, is, you know, larger than Big Wave. This is about the same size of residential buildings, same with that, you know, there, and then this, again, another one that's about the same size as Big Wave. So we're not, you know, the scale, it's kind of hard, we're not, I don't think we're out of scale, it's always, you know, people would always like things smaller, but just from the Wellness Center side, there is a direct connection between the size of the commercial and the amount of jobs, the amount of money you get, so we obviously don't want it to disappear, and the bigger the better, even as long as it meets its conditions. And one of the reasons that we went to this size, it's a size that, in all the SEQA documents, showed less than significant impacts, with the exception of traffic that needed to have a roundabout or a light intersection, we've agreed to do that. We're, I'd like to say we're very agreeable. And we've worked closely with the Committee for Greenfoothills, with Lenny Roberts, I've tried to work out things with other people, and again, we're, we and the Wellness Center are going to live in this community, we want to be part of it, we don't want to just go into a complete battle zone when we get there. So we're planning on being good neighbors. And again, it's a, it's a LEED-certified goal structure, very innovative in terms of things. I didn't talk about the infiltration system, there was a concern from the Committee for Greenfoothills that we didn't show drainage structures. We didn't show them because we actually don't have them, we have an infiltration field that treats the water and loses it on-site without having to transport it, and that was reviewed by the Coastal Commission geologist, who agreed with the analysis that we did. So I think we're in good shape. So I'm going to wrap it up and move on, but thank you very much. I do have copies of the slide thing that I'll drop off to the planning commissioners.
You do have two more minutes.
I'm going to give it to somebody else. Actually, I'll just, I have a song I'd like to sing.
No, I don't know how to use that. In fact, I will date myself, I'm Dave Byers, I'm the attorney for the applicant. On April 6, 1982, the California Coastal Commission approved the county's LCP. When they approved it, they also said there's going to be three affordable housing sites on the coast side. In 32 years, they haven't built one stick of housing. On July 27, 2004, the county housing element was approved, it said, "We're going to provide housing opportunities for the disadvantaged" in Policy 14.99. I asked the county, "Have you ever approved a housing project for the disabled on the coast side?" The answer is no. When are we going to end the disconnect of policies saying we are going to promote housing for the disadvantaged on the coast side, but not producing any on the ground? Well, today is a good day to end that disconnect and finally approve the first housing project on the coast side for the developmentally disabled. I have one other point I want to make. I'm going back to court in the lawsuit on February 26 at 9:00 a.m. before the Honorable Stephen Delano. We've been trying to settle the case, and the judge wants to know if we're going to litigate the original project, because that's the lawsuit that's out there right now. Are we going to litigate it, or will the county of San Mateo have approved the North Parcel Alternative? We've agreed to the North Parcel Alternative, but if the North Parcel Alternative is not approved, we're litigating that original project. Vote to approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That does complete the 15 minutes.
Well, I'll allow three more minutes.
I only need, I only need, my name's Jeff Peck, I only need a couple of minutes. For those who are standing, there's some seats here, I see somebody reserved it, but they didn't use them, so there's about 10 seats up here, so if anybody wants to come up, have a seat. Anyway, I just want to go back to the last meeting, and we, we asked you what you wanted, and we tried to give it everything that you asked for. You asked for a parking condition, we clarified that. You asked for parking, traffic, articulate how that works, we gave you that. We changed that cartoonish, Western Hollywood elevation that we really didn't want, we did that, and we tried to talk to the Coastal Commission and answer every one of their conditions. I think that's what everybody asked for last time. Except one other thing, I think one of the commissioners did ask about support from the community. And the last meeting, we had, for Big Wave, we had well over 100 people. This meeting, I think we are well beyond that. And I just want to ask you, when was the last time you were hearing a project? When the supporters for the project always well outnumber the opponents? Has that ever happened consistently? And this is the 27th, 27th public hearing we've had, and since we had our first public hearing, this has always been the case. The reality of this is, especially for the Wellness Center, for which we've already donated the land, and we're going to be donating more land, the real developers of the Wellness Center aren't these evil developers who are trying to pollute the environment. There are probably about 50 or 60 people out here in the audience, for the last 15 years, have worked to make this happen. We've got eight committees. We deal with food service, we deal with how to give people opportunity, how to get people out of their isolation attitude, how to prevent them from getting into drugs and alcohol, which is very, very prevalent with those with developmental disabilities, because they are ostracized from society, they don't have the opportunities everybody else has. And we have eight committees of 40 or 50 people who have been working in this for the last 15 years. This community wants this project. I think it's pretty obvious. And I'm not going to do some stunt and have everybody raise their hands, but if everybody did just raise their hands to support the project, I think you'd see my characterization is proper. So, all I can ask is that you look at this project based on the facts. I hear all these complaints about a study that an expert or a professional has done. And what happens, when you, when you're not a professional, when you're not an expert, and you contradict
That's fine.
the professional, that's all opinion. So please look at the facts and take into account what the community wants, and let's try to get this passed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any questions of the applicant? Okay, we got them.
Just, just one question, and I'm not sure which one of you would address this, but in Camille's presentation, she did have some revised conditions, conditions of approval, and are you agreeable to the conditions that were on the slides this evening?
I agree.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Let's get on with the speakers.
There are 40 speakers, the first is Lenny Roberts, followed by Carol Ford, each speaker has two minutes, and I will give you a 30-second warning, last minute thirty.
I just want to keep this, this is the tentative map for the earlier project, just to save a couple of minutes. Good evening, is this, can you hear? Thank you. So I'm Lenny Roberts, I'm with Committee for Greenfoothills, I did send you a letter two days ago. I'm not going to run through all of those points, but I still remain very concerned about the adequacy, just two points from the letter, adequacy of the tentative map. Despite the comments that have been made to you tonight, I don't believe that they are. The tentative map is not adequate for review by you and the public. I know there's other information scattered through the other submittal part of that, but the tentative map has to have this information on it, and that's one of the ones that was done for the prior project. So that's just an example. The other part is that to answer Commissioner Simonson's question, the South Parcel Boat Storage Area does not have any restrictions on it, so it is totally available for development in the future. So we could have a large, very large building built on that, on that area where the boat storage is part of this project now, but it can come back in under the zoning and get a very large building on it. So I just, that's, that remains a concern, because we have transferred that density from the Wellness Center and so forth to the North Parcel, but we still have this unprotected area in the South Parcel. So just to sort of give you the high-level issues. So just to sort of give you the high-level issues that I think are fundamental issues. The, it's one thing that bothers people, I know, is that the housing is not an allowable use in the M1 zoning district. The applicant could do a rezoning and a general plan amendment to accommodate that, but that, instead, we're trying to call this a sanitarium, which is to sort of stick some people's craw. The more important issue, I think, is that the FAA, the California Division of Aeronautics, and Public Works Department, which represents the county's airports, have all advised that the housing is not a compatible use adjacent to the airport. And approval by the county continues to be a breach of the grant assurance obligations.
Not just on the front.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Carol Ford, followed by Roseanne McKenney.
Hang on just a moment. Lenny, I think we've got a question.
Thanks. That's one quick question before we go on to the next speaker. So I understand your concern is that some of the material you would like to be in the tentative map is not in there, but I believe most of that is addressed through the conditions of approval. In your opinion, is that not sufficient?
I'm simply reading what the subdivision, county subdivision regulations require for the initial maps submitted. So adding a condition that no one will ever see later, the public won't see it, you won't see it, it'll only be left to the staff to approve, I think doesn't satisfy the regulations. Thank you.
Okay, but so, but the presentation from staff said that if you look at the tentative maps as all of them together, that they do meet the county requirements, and you disagree with that?
I disagree that, for example, the grading does not show the topographic revisions on the grading plan. It shows straight lines just across the parcel, but it doesn't show what the elevations are going to be under the buildings. That's left out. Things like that. There's lots of details that are not complied with in the, for the county. Thank you. That's just one example. Thank you.
Chairman Dvorsky and, oh, sorry. Chairman Dvorsky and commission members, I'm Carol Ford. I'm president of the San Carlos Airport Pilots Association and a vice president of the California Pilots Association. And I would like to tell you a couple of things. Even though there are laudable goals here, they do not make it compatible land use. And the FAA's concerns have not been addressed. And I just want to read you one part. I did submit a letter today. I don't know if you've all received it yet. The FAA's compliance specialist, Anthony Garcia, reiterates his previous stance in two letters to you on this project. The FAA's position remains the same because the FAA has not suspended the grant assurance obligations. For this reason, the county's compatible land use obligations remain intact and legally binding. The FAA relies on voluntary compliance because the grant agreements are long-term contracts, which the county signs with the FAA. Therefore, silence is not consent to breach the grant assurances. We wrote twice to the county, reminding county officials of their obligations to the citizens of San Mateo County. The relevant grant assurance has not changed or expired. Compatible land use obligation applies to San Mateo County whether or not the FAA writes a letter reconfirming its obligation and the grant assurances obligation. The grant assurances obligation number 21, which says that the county has the obligation to make sure that proper land use compatibility is observed, and having housing for developmentally disabled children and adults is clearly not compatible. And the fact that the place was moved to another location closer to the Pillar Point community does not make it compatible, because that use was grandfathered in and is not today allowed under the airport land use handbook, which was passed to protect residents of these communities near airports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Roseanne McKenney, followed by Ed Lorena, followed by Mary Lorena.
Commissioners, I'm glad to be here. As a parent of a special needs child, I just want you to know that according to the Department of Health and Welfare, the greatest segment of unemployed would be the disabled community. We need both low-income housing and disability jobs that give honor and respect to our young people. And we have a plan that is a superlative plan. And the sustainability over time is through the office park and the boat storage units that we have, thus the 20 acres that we have. We also want to be good stewards of the land and really hope to look at the restoration and the well-being of this beautiful area. So I just hope you thoroughly consider everything. The need for our population is huge, and it's not being addressed. So I urge you to be bold and courageous and address it with a yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Lorena, followed by Mary Lorena, followed by Ann Forster.
Commissioners, thank you for your service and for providing the opportunity for me to comment. I am Ed Munu Lorena, Chair of the San Mateo County Chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. Surf Rider Foundation's had a lab in Princeton for the past 15 years, so we've studied the water quality over many years in that area, so we're very familiar with it. I would also send you comments, so I won't go into any details here. I would, however, like to read you something that was given to you in the Coastal Commission document recently. And I would like to point out that Surf Rider stands with the comments of the Coastal Commission and also with Lenny Roberts' comments in, for Committee for Green Foothills. Let me read this to you. "The staff report and the project proponents have made a variety of assertions about the size of the project, being in character with the build and natural environment in Princeton. However, to date, these assertions have not been supported by the factual evidence necessary to draw such conclusions. In my letter to you, I say exactly the same thing. You heard that from Committee for Green Foothills, and you heard it from the MCC. The Coastal Commission are professionals. They do this for a living for many, many, much larger projects. Don't dismiss their claims." "Surf Rider Foundation strongly objects to the size and scope of this resulting project. We also object to the lack of transparency and information provided to the public." You also heard that from Committee for Green Foothills, and you heard it from the Coastal Commission. "Given the proposed project's lack of sufficient detail on many of its most important aspects and its continued noncompliance with the LCP and Coastal Act, Surf Rider strongly opposes the project in its current condition." Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Lorena, followed by Ann Forster, followed by Dave Olson.
Hi, Commissioners. I'm Mary Lorena. Thank you for this opportunity to once again speak my opposition to the Big Wave. Fact, it's been 15 years. Fact, what, 25 meetings? Fact, now you're being threatened with litigation. Any project that takes this long, this many meetings, and now is under threat of litigation in order to get it passed, right there tells you there's something fundamentally wrong with this project. I'm wondering if the traffic study took into consideration the Mavericks Contest, Dream Machine, the Pumpkin Festival, opening of salmon season and crab season. Staff said that story polls were put up inadequate and didn't really reflect a view. Nothing in the world is going to be any better or be possibly any better than an actual rendition of how large these buildings will be and how much space they will take up than adequately placed story polls with the proper orange wrapping. A little picture written on a document and put up on a screen is not going to reflect the size. I'm sorry. It's just not going to reflect the size. The drainage plan remains inadequate. Right now, if we have an El Nino year, the flood in that area is going to be substantial. And then I really am concerned about this whole idea of dwellings not being considered a place because it requires a kitchen. If you look at the definition of a dwelling, dwelling, it's a unit where someone lives or sleeps. There's proposed 70 dwellings on this property. 70 people are going to live on this property. And somehow, that is being not looked at or seen as not really people living there because they use a congregant kitchen. Could somebody please really clarify for me what they mean by dwelling, and why isn't 70 dwellings considered residences and considered under the guise of density? Please oppose this project. Please work with us so that we can get some home, decent housing for these young individuals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Forster, followed by Dave Olson, followed by James Larimer.
Is this going to work okay? Good. Okay. My name's Ann Forster. I reside in Moss Beach. I'm speaking as an individual. I sent a letter earlier today. I'm just going to hit the high points of that. The high points specifically are that I urge you not to approve this project for the following reasons. The appropriateness of this location really needs to be seriously considered. I note further that the FAA, neither the FAA nor the Pilots Association think this is a compatible use with the airport, as previously stated. Next, the size of the project. As noted in the CCC letter today, as well as findings by the CDRC, CGF, and the MCC, all of those organizations have indicated that there is a problem with compliance with the LCP. I understand that staff doesn't think that's the case, but as Ed Lorena just said, there's an awful lot of people who are professionals at this who think that there really is a problem with the compliance with the LCP. Next, the impact on traffic. I live in Moss Beach. The impact on traffic of adding a stoplight at Cypress is going to be enormous. I've lived here 28 years. I've seen the impact of every stoplight that's been added between Montero and Half Moon Bay. It's enough to keep me from shopping in Half Moon Bay. Specifically, in terms of looking only at intersections, I don't know how many of you have actually walked along Cypress when there's traffic along it, but I do. It's 21 feet wide. If you have traffic going in both directions and you are a pedestrian, it is dangerous.
Thirty.
Lastly, the duration of the project. The development agreement allows the project to stretch over a 15-year period. My fear is that there will not be continued oversight, especially regarding the conditions loaded in the staff report over this lengthy period, as institutional memory is lost. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave Olson, followed by James Larimer, followed by Lisa Ketchum.
I'm speaking as Chair of MidCoast Community Council. I'm also on the CGF board, but I am not speaking for CGF. I can say that both the MCC comments and the CGF comments were based on the most recent staff report and maps that you were asking about. We do not believe this is in scale with the community. When you look at the total size of all of these buildings in one very small place, it is clearly out of scale with the community. Yes, individual buildings are not larger than other buildings there, but overall, it is clearly out of scale. The density on the North Parcel is now even higher with everything moved to the North Parcel. It is very, very dense. Drainage is an issue. We just heard the applicant say there is no drainage, which means as soon as the gravel gets saturated, all that water spills over into the marsh. It is supposed to be contained. Traffic is a big concern for the community, and there is no way that adding a light or even a roundabout is not going to have a major impact on the traffic for the MidCoast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jim Larimer. You have a letter from me. You received it on Monday. One of many letters I've sent you on this, and I've also written editorials that have appeared in the review about this project. I support it. I'll remind you that this is the 27th public hearing that we've had on this, on this project. And Jeff's comment about the same people being here on both sides, I think, is probably true. And I think it is also true that the supporters have outnumbered the opponents in almost every one of those 27 meetings. I hope tonight you will finally make a decision, up or down, on this project. It's really time to do it. It's been over 10 years. Well, it's in, this is the 10th year. This is not good government. When a project like this continues on this long and can't get an up or down decision, you should do that tonight. Thank you. I hope you will approve.
Thank you.
Lisa Ketchum, followed by Laura Stein.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Ketchum. I'm a member of the MidCoast Community Council, and I'm also president of the Pillar Ridge Homeowners Association. I'm sure the commissioners have visited the Big Wave North Parcel site and noticed the propane storage facility next door on the northern boundary. This hazardous use is grandfathered in the airport overlay zone. In addition to the potential for deadly exposure, the fire marshal here tonight can attest to the numerous complaints of noxious smells from the practice of outgassing the tanks. Propane is heavier than air, and so flows downhill and collects and lingers in low places where it could explode if ignited. The natural grade in the area slopes gently downwards from the propane area towards the marsh across the Big Wave Parcel, North Parcel. Each Big Wave project revision has brought the housing component closer to the propane facility. Actually, it's brought it closer to the airport runway as well. It's now directly across the street from that. While the propane hazard has not been addressed in the EIR, clearly the applicant is aware of the danger. A new addition to the grading plan proposes the four-foot-high propane deflection wall along the adjoining property line, which would direct the downhill flow of any leaking propane away from the Big Wave Parcel, directing it instead toward Pillar Ridge Homes to the west. Whether this is changed out for a berm, it's the same effect. And this applies for runoff, too. They would be blocking the natural runoff and then directing it towards Pillar Ridge. By attempting to protect the Big Wave housing, the propane hazard would be shifted to residents at Pillar Ridge. This is not, this is not acceptable and would constitute a significant unmitigated impact under SEQA. And just as a PS, I wanted to say about the previous story polls, the reason they didn't work was because the netting was not used. It was this thin, flimsy tape that you couldn't see from anywhere except right there on Airport Street. It wasn't done properly. That's why it didn't work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. Laura Stein, followed by Barbara Kosse.
Hi. I'm Laura Stein. I'm a member of the MidCoast Community Council, Licked Body, represented by the, to represent our community. I want to urge you to carefully review and consider the MCC letter, as well as the Coastal Commission's, the Committee for Green Foothills, Surf Riders, and of course, the coastside design reviews recommendations. I have been present at all of the coastside design review meetings, which were very lengthy. And I can tell you, one of the biggest concerns has been that every single time I had a meeting, there was a change in the plans, which is part of the reason that things have been held up. You have been presented with collective opinion from organizations that are here to protect our coastal resources in our neighborhoods. The MidCoast checks and balances, if you will. So the overall message clearly that you're hearing is that this project is not ready for approval. Our community will be looking at this project for years to come. So we all feel like there's certainly, we need to take time and get it right, that it needs to be compliant with the LCP. So I ask that you deny this project in its present form. And thank you. And thanks for coming out a second time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Barbara Kosse, followed by Chris Johnson.
I'm sorry. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Barbara Kosse. I live in Moss Beach. I opposed the approval of this project for all the reasons that were stated before me. And I believe all of those people have given very thoughtful, intelligent analysis to reasons to oppose it. I also, I think it's an ambitious project that's out of scale with the community, and it's an ambitious project, but it's, what I see is sort of a sloppy proposal. There's continually proposal after proposal, but every meeting reveals more details and more aspects of construction and design that haven't been thought out very carefully. And so my feeling is, I don't really trust the developers of this, because if there's sloppy proposals, there could only be sloppy because if there's sloppy proposals, there could only be sloppy implementation. I think that traffic analysis was really inadequate. It doesn't have anything to do with the real traffic flow and real day-to-day life on the coast side. And it also disregards the safety of pedestrians and cyclists on Cypress and actually an opportunity to use that corridor as a real transportation corridor. And then the whole idea of aspiring to the architectural standards of Princeton, is that really what we want for new developments on the coast side? Is to have a new development that we'll be living with for generations to come to aspire to the aesthetics of warehouses? And, you know, live workspaces? So, you know, with that sort of aspiration, I just cannot support this development. And I hope you also oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Johnson, followed by Mike Ferrara.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for coming out to the coast side. Appreciate it. The community design manual, which the Coastside Design Review Committee used to review this project, clearly states as its number-one point that a project should not exceed the size and scale of the neighborhood. Also, the Plan Princeton initiative that the county is taking to look at the future of Princeton, the overwhelming number of comments, of which there have been a lot of them, have said, "We want Princeton to stay the way it is." If we look at the document that the California Coastal Commission provided, fully 97% of the buildings in Princeton are smaller than any individual building of this project, let alone the sum total of this entire development. So if we can, and not to mention the comments from numerous interested organizations who are here to do the public good. Organizations like Surf Riders, the Committee for Green Foothills, not to mention the Midcoast Community Council and the Coastside Design Review Committee. So it is also my opinion that this project is out of size and scale for the community. And so, to me, that's what I ask you to look at. I really want you to consider the future, should you approve of this project. If the community design manual quotes size and scale of the community and this project is approved, it not only breaks the mold of what is size and scale for the Princeton community, it makes a new mold. And every project that comes after this will be compared to these buildings in this project. Look, look at Big Wave. It's not as big as Big Wave. It doesn't have as many buildings as Big Wave. So approving this project has great implications, not just for the next 15-year development cycle, not even for our lifetimes of the people that are alive in this room right now. This has great implications for the future of Princeton and the coast side for 50, 100 years in the future because of what it is going to change as far as the size and scale of the neighborhood as how that is perceived.
Time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate getting a chance to comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Ferrara, followed by Joseph Rogers.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mike Ferrara. I'm here tonight speaking as the Chair of the Conservation Committee of the Loma Prieta Chapter of the Sierra Club. We have sent, and I hope you have received, a short letter that we tried to condense to one page with some attached photographs. It's not on the back table. I will just reiterate that the things that we have tried to emphasize tonight are that we were an appellant on the prior project. We've, at this point, we would like to recognize that you have, the applicant, that is, has tried to accommodate some of the concerns of the Coastal Commission. We are still quite concerned about coastal policies, coastal act, local coastal program policies regarding the visual aspects. And we are very concerned about impacts to coastal access, particularly on Cypress Avenue. That's a very troubled and constricted road. We do not accept the breezy assurances that it could handle this project at full build-out. We think you're going to, we would have extremely difficult time widening that road as it crosses a creek. And your, as we understand it, you would probably have to eminent domain the front yards of the houses when you get to Highway 1 in order to do an intersection there. The costs of bringing Cypress Avenue to the point where you were no longer impacting coastal access, and that is a coastal access route, would be phenomenal. And we don't seem to have that before us tonight. I would hope that we can continue to work on this project. I interpret the Coastal Commission's comments as meaning the project is still too large. Not that it needs to be spread out, but it's just too large and the math is you need big buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Rogers, followed by Rosa Isabella Martinez.
Thank you to the Commission. I'm Joseph Rogers. I live in Belmont. I'm also on the Board of Directors of a program for the development with disabled in Arizona that has been extremely successful. I've been on this board for 10 years. And it has very similar objectives to Big Wave. And that's why I'm here to support it. Because I've seen what a transformative power programs like Big Wave have for the development, developmentally disabled. You have no idea how important it is to their lives. You want to see a face light up? Ask somebody with disability about their job. This is one of the things that Big Wave is going to promote and do. And it, it's one of the first things you would ask somebody when you just first meet them. You say, "What's, what's your business?" It's the same for the disabled. They want to work. They don't want to be an object of your charity. They want to work. And Big Wave will provide those opportunities to do that. As a member of the Board of this program in Arizona for the last 10 years, I'm also familiar with the "not in my neighborhood" approach to opponents. I saw it over and over again. It's wonderful that you're helping these, these people, but not in my neighborhood. I've got a little piece of paradise and I don't want you in it. We've had to overcome that just time after time after time. People who go to church and profess love for their neighbors. Bottom line is, this is a program that will do tremendous amount of good. You've got a planning commission staff that, obviously, they're professionals. They know what they're doing. They ask and answer to every question. They appear to be in favor of this. I think you should listen to them.
Thank you.
Rosa Isabella Martinez, followed by Dr. Alan Odean.
Hi, Rosa Martinez. Good evening, our community. We need this for all the people with special needs to have more support and better living. I believe may have done everything. It's necessary hope and hope that we will get yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Alan Odean, followed by Karen Holmes.
Is there a doctor in the house? I'm assuming he has departed.
Karen Holmes, followed by David Schricker.
Karen's here, but I think she's just left off. Oh, here she's coming.
The staff and Scott Holmes already said what I needed to say, so.
Okay, thank you.
Dana Schricker, followed by Harvey Rorback.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission. I'm David Schricker. I represent Montero Water and San Jose District. Chairman Teldman, General Manager is also present if you have any questions for him. First of all, I'd like to indicate that we concur with the conditions of approval that relate to water utility providing to the, to the development. And appreciate very much the excellent expertise of your staff in understanding the arcane provisions of dealing with water utility law and supplies. With respect to the Coastal Commission's letter, I'd like to address that. It's answered, the questions are answered by our letter that's a part of the administrative record dated October 24, 2014. The issue that is raised by the Commission as to whether the 15,000 GPT gallons per day is for the office park only, no. It's for, it's a gross figure for the entire development that's been provided to us. I'd like to point out that of the available capacity that we have, which is 141,387 GPD, the demand of this development, quite frankly, if you excuse the pun, is a drop in the bucket. It amounts to about 10% of the total available capacity supply that we have. Of that, 5,000 GPD comes from our allocation, which is already reserved under the local coastal program, LCP, for priority uses. Thus, 5,000 GPD comes from our priority allocation, which then leaves really about 7% non-priority, which is allocated to this project. Our figures are based on the supply intensive studies by our water master plan, which is... Reviewing on five, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to address them.
Thank you.
Chairman Doraski, can we have him actually iterate a little more? Because I really would like to understand a little more, please.
We'll give you more time.
Could you repeat that for me?
We're going to give you some more time.
Okay, thank you very much. The priority, as I say, the 5,000 GPD relates to priority reservation, which we already have. So it's, the remaining, remainder of demand is non-priority, which we have. The, our projections for demand are based on the local coastal program and our knowledge of the generation of water that we produce annually. It's replenished. We've been through a drought. And notwithstanding that we've had a drought, we've had essentially, in the terms of the industry, a surplus of water. We can provide water for the development that's projected by this project and including the development that's projected by the LCP. We're governed indirectly by the LCP. The county's governed, it's a, it's a government, it's a regulation for the county's allocation of building permits. Our reservation of capacity dovetails with that requirement. So we know about that. And we are prepared and we do allocate our available supply consistent with the LCP. With respect to the demand as it goes forward, we're prepared to address any increase in demand that goes beyond what the LCP calls for, if the county were to allow it, under our public works plan, which has been approved by the Coastal Commission. We take a look at so-called large developments. It's a matter of definition, over 200 GPD. We take a look at it and say, "Do we or do we not have sufficient capacity?" Right now, we look at it and we say, "Yes, we have sufficient capacity." This is not a large development in that context. In the future, we follow that plan. And we're governed by that public works plan as well as the LCP. You govern the demand on the water by virtue of the issuance of building permits. We respond to those. We have an obligation under law, if we have water available, to issue a water connection permit consistent with the issuance of a building permit by the county. So when you issue building permits, and we have water, which we have now, we will issue water connections.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Question?
So just, I just want to clarify. And the California Coastal Commission letter you were referencing was their most recent one, which is dated January 14, 2015, correct? That, that, you indicated you were addressing the concerns raised by...
Yes, yes.
And that's their letter dated January 14, 2015?
Today, yes, which we just received today, yes.
I wanted to clarify that because that, that's important because that's something that we just saw today. And, and so just in layperson's terms, I think, you know, that, that your position is, under a full build-out, you would be able to provide sufficient water to the project.
Correct.
Thank you.
I would like to respond to, I thought it was a very cogent question raised by the Commission with respect to the new groundwater management legislation. That provides, it's Groundwater Sustainability Act, and it provides a long-range program throughout the state with respect to water service providers that rely on groundwater, which we do. By the way, we've developed quite a bit of water. And we also have, the reason we have a surplus is because of conservation and management practices that we have. Eventually, we anticipate that Montero Water and San Jose District will either be a groundwater sustainability agency under that act or will combine with other agencies in the locale and become a party to a groundwater sustainability agency. And, and through that, provide greater management of the groundwater supplies which we have here, resources here. So that's a long-range plan, but we will be involved in that very much. And we look forward very much to that. In fact, we've talked about groundwater management with the county many, many times over the years. And we plan on proceeding. I think that state legislation really is a good vehicle to get locally here a much better focus on groundwater management than we've had in the past.
Great, thank you very much.
Harvey Rorback, followed by David Morgan.
We're going to listen to Harvey, and then we're going to take a short break after that.
Good evening, Commissioners. Harvey Rorback. I'm a Director on the Coastside Fire Protection District, but I'm speaking as an individual. The staff report was very good in that they went and analyzed some of the issues about essentially warehousing developmentally-disabled individuals. And in particular, I'm referring to the Olmsted decision, which said that the ADA established the right of persons with developmental disabilities to live in a less restrictive environment. I'm also referring to the Landerman Act, which made it state policy that persons with disabilities should be able to live in the community. I think it's wrong to warehouse developmentally-disabled people out in the middle of nowhere. They belong in the community. They belong in a place where there are services, where there's transportation, where there is a chance to interact with mainstream community. So I urge you not to approve this part, at least the wellness center part, because disabled individuals need to be part of the mainstream community, not to be put out in the middle of nowhere. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We need to support that effort. And we need to make, find ways to make any of the negative impacts work to make this project happen. Our son had a disability. And the schools turned him away. Their way of dealing with it is, you know, suspending him. People would not rent houses to them, to him. And so we ended up buying a house and so that he could have a place to live and call his own and have a place to rent. And, and there was other people there that had disabilities that rented rooms also. Anyway, please support this project.
Thank you.
Glenn Mitchell, followed by Dylan and Mimi Rogers.
No Glenn? Mimi?
Hi, Dylan. Dylan's a little shy right now. What's your name?
Mom.
Dylan Rogers, right? Dylan, would you like to live in a place where you had housemates, friends, that you could live with?
Yeah.
Would you like a job so you could work and contribute?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Dylan is a recent... We moved to California about two and a half years ago. When she lived in Arizona, she did have a job. And we're still working very hard to get her employment. When I met Jeff Peck and his group, Big Wave, I was just, dream come true. Because this is not a warehouse project. I have to differ with that. This is a project much like a dormitory, suite-type of dormitory at a college. That's what these guys will be doing. They'll be living together, they'll be supporting each other, they'll be learning life skills, and they'll be doing what everybody in this room has a right to do, to have meaningful employment, to have the opportunity to live with a housemate of their choosing, to have relationships that make sense to them with peers. And we need to please support this project. Not only will this fit El Granada, but it will make El Granada proud to be supporting a project like Big Wave. And there will be places all over the country modeling themselves after Big Wave. It's a sustainable, innovative, creative, and it needs to happen. Please support Big Wave. Please say yes.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Peck. I want to live... I want to be a resident at Big Wave. Please vote yes. Thank you, done.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Joseph Nunez, followed by Kat Melzer.
No Joe?
Kat Melzer, followed by Marlene Gomez.
Hi, Commissioners. Seems to me a little disingenuous... Oh, sorry. And I thought I knew what I was doing. It seems to me a little disingenuous that a lot of the objections about Big Wave are that it keeps changing. And then when you... And there are complaints made, and the changes are addressed, and then we're going to complain because it's not the same as it was last time. That doesn't seem right to me. But change isn't easy. You've updated your operating system. You know what happens. It's stressful. I have a friend who's 97. She's blind. She's in terrible health. And her son is losing his mind because she will not go into a nursing home. She wants to stay in the home that she lived in all her life. Now, the change that we're asking our developmentally-disabled brothers and sisters to do is this. When your parents die, get a suitcase. Because you're going to have to pack up and go somewhere else where nobody knows you, and you don't know anybody, and you have no choice. That doesn't seem right to me. In Missouri, where I grew up, and I live in Moss Beach, by the way, but where I grew up, I lived in a town that's about the same population as Montara, down to Pescadero. In that town, they have four group homes, an apartment complex, and half a dozen ISLs, independent supervised living situations, as well as a residential facility for people who are too disabled to live independently. This is a good plan. And it's the right plan. I know change is difficult, and this is a big change. But it's the right thing to do, and it's the right time to do it. I ask you, please, please, allow Big Wave Project to go forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
Marlene Gomez, followed by Joseph Rogers III.
Good evening, my name is Marlene Gomez. My honor, I support Big Wave, is my honor. And they need our support is what will make us happy. Please support us for years to make us happy.
Thank you.
Joseph Rogers III, followed by Kathy Reed.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Joe Rogers. I'm a San Mateo County resident. I'm here to request that the Commission vote to approve the Big Wave proposal. After 27 hearings, two things are evident. The opposition's ongoing reliance on picky regulatory requirements to hold up the project for over a decade. And secondly, Big Wave's perseverance and commitment to their noble goals throughout the entire process. If the Commission waits for the perfection that the opposition keeps demanding repeatedly over and over again, we'll be here for yet another 10 years. To wait for that perfection is impractical and, quite frankly, silly. But your approval here tonight is not the end of the road. There are still plentiful inadequate means and channels for community recourse if Big Wave fails to honor its commitment to the community. But that's not going to happen. Big Wave has consistently demonstrated its ongoing commitment to cooperate with the Commission and the community and address all the concerns put before it. This history of cooperation and good faith dealing is indicative of Big Wave's ability and willingness to correct any technical deficiencies already found or later to be discovered. And to echo the Fire Marshal's comments from earlier, tweaking is going to be needed one way or the other. Again, to wait for the perfection that the opposition is demanding is impractical, meaningless, and unnecessary. Most importantly, I think we have to examine the spirit of the project being proposed here and balance that against the legitimate concern of preserving the beauty and character of the community here. But here, Big Wave's aims are truly honorable, supporting the developmentally-disabled. We're not talking about putting up skyscrapers and factories here. If this was a commercial project, it'd be different. But we're talking about good people doing good things that are needed in the community. I ask that the Commission vote to approve the proposal tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kathy Reed, followed by Joseph Solera.
Hello, my name is... I'm Kathy Reed, and I'm a developer of the Big Wave Farm and Garden and of the wetlands area of this property. I support this project. Not only for the beautiful population that, as you can see here, that are supporting it, but I do it as my gift to this community. I lived in Moss Beach for a while. I now live in Pacifica. But I love coming here and working with this population. What I heard tonight from the opposition echoes a lot of prejudice. And I'm asking the Commission to open their hearts, look at the project as a whole, look at the people we're going to serve, look at what it's going to do for a special population of people who've been severely underserved over the generations, and to just try to focus on the good of the project and not the negative prejudices that you've heard tonight. Thank you very much.
My name is Robert Solera. I am a member of the Board of Big Wave and have lived on the coast for 30 years. I'd ask the Commissioners to consider the positive aspects of the proposal of Big Wave, providing housing and job opportunities on the coast. I'd ask you to look at the facts as presented by the staff in the proposal and the willingness on our side to address as many concerns as possible raised and still continue to maintain the spirit of Big Wave. So I request you approve the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Sales. And Pam Sales will be followed by Robert. Again, I apologize, that's Patrick.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Pam Sales. I live in Half Moon Bay, and I've lived on the coast side over 40 years. This is my son, Joe. It's been his hope and prayer to live at the Big Wave Project. When this dream began, he was 28 years old. Next month, he turns 40. It's testament to the uphill battle that parents of children with special needs have to provide the services that they need. Take education, for example. With the exception of preschool and a part of his kindergarten year in Half Moon Bay, he was bussed over the hill to school in San Mateo, Daly City, Pacifica, Burlingame, San Bruno, and Redwood City. And then once our kids get out of school, there's the issue of trying to find a day program and a job for them. After his job coach knocked on many doors in Half Moon Bay, our friend Cameron Palmer finally offered a job to Joe. And this summer, he'll have worked there for 18 years. He would like to be able to continue to live on the coast side. He was born here. We've provided housing for farmworker and agricultural workers on the coast side. We've provided senior housing. And don't misunderstand me, I think those are great projects. But we have ignored a segment of our population on the coast side. And I want to say, if the approval of every special interest group was needed for a project to be built, there would never be anything built on this coast side. So please approve this project to provide a safe and welcoming community for our children. Thank you so much.
Patrick Gwynn, followed by Holly.
Hi, I'm Patrick Gwynn. I'm a developer here. Other than building, I can talk about. I'm working each individual by 20. So I then do, want to do farm, gardening. I want to say all that. I've got that done too, and I have that kitchen and all that. And I show in class, being in class. I'm 29 years old. I'm 29 this year. And I show, I live Half Moon Bay. And I leave my heart to everyone here and people of Half Moon Bay. I've got a lot of things going on right now. I'm a band. And so, yeah, please support Big Wave for everyone.
Holly Gwynn, followed by John Hutar.
Hi, I'm Patrick's mom. I just wanted to start off and thank Camille and the staff for all the hard work they've done over the last six years. I see some new faces here. I've been up here a few times. But Camille, they never take our word for anything. They always bring in an expert, they always check. So I guess the question for me to you guys is, why would you not take your staff's suggestion and approve this? They've put a lot of hard work. They know this better than probably almost every other person that got up and spoke tonight. And it's hard to believe that they have overlooked anything in this amount of time. I also coached Special Olympics. And one of the things I've noticed with Patrick and all of his friends, there is no pretense in what they do. Everything is right from the heart. It's factual, it's true, they're in the moment. And I don't get that feeling with a lot of folks that got up here tonight that spoke on the opposition. You know, you get the airport people. Why do they suddenly have a concern about something that we're not in an area that they should have a concern about? We're in approved area. Hmm, is it because they haven't quite met their funding? I don't know. There's some other groups that have gotten up and spoke. You know, what is their hidden agenda? Why are they really opposed to this? So I just would like to make the recommendation that you follow staff's report and approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Hutar, followed by Terry Chapiel.
Good evening, my name is John Hutar. We moved here in 1997 with our family and found family with the Big Wave Group. Our middle child, who is now 23, has Down Syndrome. And it's a daunting world, and you want to fit in. You want to be included. And I think we've demonstrated that with Big Wave. After 15 years and so many revisions, it's now working against us to be included in the community. For my youngest and oldest, who don't have a disability, they'll figure it out. Life is going to be fine. They'll be educated and find jobs. But for our middle guy, it's a concern. What happens when we pass? And as you saw at the podium tonight, our Big Wave community participants just want the opportunity. Have a podium, they'll come up and speak. Turn on the mic, they'll say something thoughtful, meaningful, and compelling. And that's how they want to live their lives. It's not a warehouse. It's a vibrant community. People want to live with their friends. They want to help one another. They want to assist each other. It might look different than what we're used to, for sure. But it's their world and their life, and they deserve to live it their way. In my professional work, I employ 12 individuals with developmental disabilities for the company I manage. And that feeling of the first time a person with, of that developmental disability work group, brought home a turkey, we give turkeys out to all employees, was profound. When their plus ones wrote me a letter, who came to the annual holiday party to say, "What a great time we had." And this was the first time it wasn't organized in the disability world. It was just out there in the broader community. It's compelling. You have the ability. Follow your staff report. Please approve this. You will do so much good, not only for today, but for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Chapiel, followed by Helena Disami.
This is Brian, and he doesn't sit this long anywhere, but today he is. First and foremost, a couple of the people in opposition tonight have said that this was an inappropriate place and out of scale with the community. I'm here to tell them that they are the community. This is where he was born and raised, with the majority of the children here. I have, I'm 55 years old, and I have lived in San Mateo County my entire life. Brian was born and lives in San Mateo County. We have six kids total. They have appropriate jobs, living arrangements, wives, siblings. They're just, you know, roommates. Brian has nowhere to go. He aged out of the school system in July, turned 22. They gave me four programs to choose from. One in San Francisco, City of San Francisco, one in Santa Clara County, and two in, one's in San Carlos and one is in San Bruno. All of them look like one flew over the cuckoo's nest, no lie. They walk in, and they are watching movies. If Big Wave isn't approved, you need to do something for this community. Brian started this when he was in technically middle school. So I believe he was probably 10, 11, and we're still here today. Recently, they approved a building to be built in Princeton for a wedding to replace a temporary tent. If we can replace a temporary tent with a permanent building, how is that traffic not impacting that environment or that area? It's going to be in every, it will no longer be seasonal, it will be all the time. I agree with it. I think it's great that they approved it. But there's too many excuses for these kids. We have actually just sold our home, and we are moving because there is nowhere for him to go here. After living in this county for 55 years, we're leaving. Brian's leaving, all his friends, and we hope to be able to come back with Big Wave.
Helena Disami.
I support Big Wave. It is a dream tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Patricia Hansen, followed by Dan Haggerty.
Hi, thank you, everyone. I'm here to support Big Wave and ask for an approval tonight to finally move through the bureaucracy and all the litigation that has gone on. You have heard the self-interest groups, same old complaints, maybe magnified, some discrimination points I heard, I'm hoping you had heard too, through some of the self-interest. This property has been provided to you. Where has there been another family or person who's donated land to build such an incredible place for children to live? That may be your children's children. That may be my daughter, who needs a place to live and has lived on the coast her whole life. Her sister will have to probably tend to her afterwards. Now, I don't wanna move her to Modesto. I don't wanna move her to Fresno. This is some places, a community that has come together as family, friends, brothers, sisters, mothers, uncles, aunts, that support this, that will be here to follow it along the way. Once again, here's a property that has been donated land. You guys can do the right thing, put a feather in your cap and say this is something that you built and that you can stand by. The property down there is ugly. Can you, if you walk that property, we would be an improvement. It would look so much better if we were to put the Big Wave Project. We would be improving our land, our landscape, people's lives, families, homes.
Thirty seconds.
I just say that the impact on traffic, these kids already live here, already. The impact traffic will probably lessen because they're not going out and in and having service care providers do that. There's plenty of water, you've heard that. It's okay for the Moss Beach residents to live there, but not our children? I don't understand that other people, the Ritz has been built, the Senior Citizens Center has been built, the post office in Half Moon Bay, that big complex over there has been built. Why are we not being able to be built? I'd like to urge you to really consider the facts, not the opinions, and vote and approve tonight, Big Wave. It is supported.
Dan Haggerty followed by Elizabeth Westpremy.
Good evening Commissioners, Dan Haggerty, El Granada. I think that this project is way out of scale. If it was in a reasonable scale, it may have been approved ten years ago. But it's consistently just been, just way out of scale. The, you know, the concept of having a home for developmentally challenged, I think is a wonderful concept, and it should be on the coast side somewhere close to services, not out, not out in the, far away from buses, you know, there's no retail out there, there's really, you know, it's just, it's, would be a very long walk to any reasonable services. The traffic implications of this is enormous. Everything would be funneled through Cypress Avenue. And everybody knows, it lives here, that's an extremely dangerous intersection. I don't think that it could bear the, all of the car trips that a development like this would produce. It's zoned M1. So, not for housing. And, you know...
Thirty seconds.
God bless these folks. I hope that they can find something for them, you know, nearby, in San Mateo County, hopefully on the coast side. But, you know, if it was scaled down, it might, it might get some local support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elizabeth Westpremy followed by John Cooper.
Elizabeth Westpremy, thirty-year Moss Beach resident. And, I'm a little overwhelmed. You heard lots of opinions and input why this project should or should not happen. But do we really know this project? I'm following it for years. By profession, I should be able to understand it. I know there are two hundred residential units and a number, unidentified number of businesses, nature of businesses, number of people using it, equipment circulation unknown. And we're talking about facades and how this will look like. We have a zoning which clearly prohibits residential usage in this coastal-dependent land, which we don't have many. In my opinion, this zoning should be repaired. This is a reason why it was established. And if it's a compelling reason to change this zoning, and not circumventing, because it went into an understandable process, which nobody really understands what's happening, giving conditions to youth permit to youth permit to condition, and everything lost somewhere, change the zoning. This is a very simple process. In ten years, it would have been done. With the housing for the developmentally disabled people, I don't understand, in a one-mile radius, we have three sites, beautiful sites, one next to the St. Cathedral Hospital. Designed for this, it's in the LCP, it has water allocation, it has absolutely no traffic problems or any indication for traffic problems. Why not build this project there? They still can come like ten years ago in a very short ride to ten days.
Can you ramp it up, please?
Okay. Please keep the coastal-dependent land how it is. Without rezoning, don't even entertain to change the youth permits. And please help the people to find one of those sites and have the housing on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Cooper followed Daniela Toriano.
Hi, I'm John Cooper, thirty-year resident of the coast side. My wife Melissa spoke a little earlier. And I wanted to share some of the financial benefits of the Big Wave Project from the point of view of the disabled. I personally, we have been involved with Housing for the Disabled on the coast side, and I can personally attest to some of the work that these people have done. We've seen housing remodeling done. I've personally witnessed this and testified both to the quality of the work done and to the, to the cost and the financial benefit. Gardening has been great. We've seen recycled veggie oil used for fuel. There's been a number of people involved with waitressing and serving food, numbers of musicians, janitorial work, flower arrangements for weddings, a number of people, all of these people, and then we're talking about ten people, ten different people that I have known over the last few years, working through my son. You know, our son, who's passed away, really taught us an awful lot about the, you know, working with the disabled. But all these people that I've come to know are contributors to the community. They're providing jobs, they're, I'm sorry, they're filling jobs, they're serving your food, they're packing your groceries, they're, they're working on cleaning your cars. And what the Big Wave Project is, is like a synergistic opportunity for these, all these things to come together.
Thirty.
Meaning that what we would do with Big Wave and what's been done in the community, the two things together in synergism would provide better financial opportunities on the coast side, better opportunities for these individuals as well as for the businesses around. Thank you.
My name is Daniela, and thank you for listening to my thoughts. I recently graduated summa cum laude with a degree in early childhood education from Kenyon College. And by the way, I have a severe hearing loss. If you don't have a loved one with a disability, then you can't possibly imagine what it's like to worry about where your adult son or daughter is going to live, or if they'll be close to you or not. So I'd like to make a small comparison. For those of this Commissioner group who still have a social or moral roadblock in your mind, I would like to say that a majority of you may have parents who will be needing living arrangements made for them as they get older. What if this area did not already have a senior citizens center? And instead of trying to build housing for those with disabilities, Jeff was asking for your approval to build a senior citizens home? Would you want your aging relatives in some random distant place where you don't live, or would you want them close by? One difference is that the seventy individuals who will be living here, they'll have a wonderful life to live, thrive, and who will benefit the entire coastal community. I respectfully ask you to consider that analogy and approve this project tonight.
Hello, my name is Maryam Wallace, and I'm speaking from the perspective of being a thirty-nine-year resident in El Granada, which my house is on the map, so I think I can say justly that I'm in the neighborhood. I've also been a Sierra Club member for forty-two years, and for twenty, over twenty-five years, I've known the individuals who will be benefited by this project, and I urge you to support it. And I have four points I want to make. First of all, in terms of traffic, as I said, I live, I will be potentially impacted because our outgo is the same as the outgo from the Big Wave Project. The fact that this project is self-contained means that there, that will actually, it will not cause as much traffic in and out as, say, a tourist development, which people have to come in and out because people will be living and working in the same place. The second is in terms of change Pillar Point. It will change Pillar Point Harbor. I saw the storyboards. I spend a lot of time walking in Pillar Point, and I think it's a change for the better. The community, and the fact that the community has had live-work places, this certainly is in line with it, and I think having people that are living there, that are invested in the community, will improve the quality of Pillar Point. The third thing is in terms of the view corridor. They mentioned that. I've walked many times over all the trails on the coast side, and I know that a two-story development there will not impact the view of the hills, which is the view. If you're looking at the view downwards, it won't, it won't impact that because it's too small. Finally, I believe that we are lucky to have the investment that these people have made over the years to make Big Wave. I've seen the community work. I've seen individuals support each other in important things. Not, the idea of warehousing is incomprehensible to me because of what I've witnessed. I've witnessed people support each other with the death of a parent, an increase of disability. And I believe that this is really important, and I hope you will be able to fund it so we can go ahead, or support it so we'll go ahead. Thank you very much.
Steve Barbour followed by Linda Steele.
Is it okay? Hello. Hello Commissioners, I appreciate your time being here. And county staff, we've been through this for six years. It's been a long time. I'm one of the founders and owners of the Big Wave Project. I got my partner Jeff Peck involved. And when I first looked at the land, the fourteen acres was an illegal paintball course, full of boxes and junk and illegal trenches. The five acres was a dumping site, big logs, boats, and cars. We had to, I had to pay and haul it all the way, clean it all up. And then after we got it cleaned up, we bought the yuccas, the farmers, to keep it clean and sustainable. Well, Jeff and I have been through, together for twenty years. Elizabeth was two when this thing all started. Jeff was, started the Special Olympics on the coast. We're real people. These are my friends and family, all these people. I'm the handyman out at Big Wave Farm. I'm about to back home, I do things for them. I've been out there three or four times a week, probably for the last fifteen years. And I'll say that the airport noise, I don't even notice it, I just see airplanes going to and from, doing landings and taking off.
Thirty seconds.
And the airport property's no problem, the noise is no problem, so I just hope that, this is a community we're trying to build, not just housing. It's a community. We're trying to get our loved ones in the right path to get jobs. You know, they all have their pluses where they can get two things. Okay, so thank you very much.
Linda Steele followed by Devon Yoshimini.
Thank you for staying late tonight. I'm a resident of Cypress Avenue in Moss Beach, and I want to, I think it's been much maligned, my street, tonight, by the way. But I would like to say that a traffic light at Cypress Avenue and Highway One would be a great addition to, with this project, because it would stop the many accidents that I've witnessed in the twenty years I've lived there. I think I'm so much in support of this project because I believe that it will enhance the quality of all of our lives. And not only that, it will preserve the rights of people with developmental disabilities to live and remain living in their own community. So for that reason, I want you to support the project. And just, don't delay tonight. Make a decision, because, look, the more we delay, the more we'll get caught up in all the different self-interests that have been manifested here tonight. And I think it's a time waster, and it isn't good government, as was said before. So as you make your decision, just remember that the humanity of any society is measured by how it treats its most vulnerable citizens. And that's what should be your yardstick tonight. Thank you.
The final speaker is Devon Yoshimini.
How you guys doing today? I'm gonna make this short and sweet, but I've been a coast side resident for sixteen years. I'm twenty-three years old, and I moved here when I was seven. One of the concerns I had is, or questions I had is, why be so concerned with traffic when most of the residents here don't drive? Secondly, I just wanna say I have a dream, and all these people behind me have a dream, to live, thrive, and grow in a community in which we can contribute and to also receive the benefits from living there from. So please approve this project tonight. Thank you.
My name's Craig Serab. I'm the Princeton representative on the Community Design Review Committee. And I should clarify that I'm speaking on behalf of them, not as a member of the public. So my intention is to keep these comments on clarifying some of the things that came up at Design Review. I believe I have five minutes or what I need, so I'll try and keep it as close to that as I can. First of all, and I just have several points. With regard to Condition Eighty-Eight, I wanna clear up a little bit, at least our impression as the committee members, what we were actually doing when that list of conditions was produced. At that point, and this was the sort of marathon meeting that we had in November, the special meeting that we held before the last meeting that was here. And at the point where we dove into creating those, that list, where we were was mostly in agreement that we were ready for, to issue the denial. And we were encouraged by one of the committee members and staff to explore what kind of conditions we could come up with. If we were to say, well, approval with conditions, what would those conditions be like? like? And so we dove into that, pretty, you know, we're, you know, we have design background. It's, it's, it's what we're, it's what we do, and we did it in good faith, and we spent hours and hours. I don't know if I even had a glass of water that day. And also remember that there was some pressure on us at that point due to the Permit Streamlining Act consideration that we later, you know, which we discussed last time, whether that was wrong, but at that point, we felt pressurized, and so we went ahead and did it. But really, this was an exercise, and what kind of an exercise was it? Well, what we found was, after really hours and picking, getting into real detail on that stuff, what we found was that we actually couldn't come up with a reasonable set of conditions, and it was starting to get fairly long and fairly intricate, and, and, and it became really clear that it was not going to go where we needed to see that. We were, we were talking about basically redesigning the thing without drawing anything and without the applicant there, right? The applicant was long gone from, from, from being at that meeting at that point in the discussion we were late at, and we were late into the evening. So at that point, when we realized there just was no way that we were going to come up with conditions that we could attach to an approval, and remember, we weren't looking to do that in the first place, we were doing it in the abstract as a hypothetical or as an exercise. That's my recollection of it. The other, one of the other committee members here and, and one of the members of staff is here, and I think some other people sat through that entire meeting, if you want to, I'm pretty sure I'm recalling it correctly. So again, those Condition 88 conditions, an exercise, a hypothetical, not based on us wanting to do it, and going not anywhere where we could get to someplace that we were really coming up with something that we thought we could give you. Moving on, moving on to my next point was, somebody raised a question, or raised an issue here, that saying repeatedly that there was a moving target, that there's design changes, is disingenuous. I'm relatively in agreement with that to, to a point, right? Yes, it's not really fair to say to, to an applicant, well, you know, there needs to be a change here, and then they come back with some changes, and then to beat on for being a moving target. That's not really right. However, what's different about this project is, it's a really big project, and the changes that we were talking about required a certain amount of thought, a certain amount of time to, if you make, if you move something, it has an impact, and these were fair, if it was a house, yeah, you could redesign it in a week or two and redraw it and bring it back, and we could, we could talk about it. With a project of this scale, when we're asking for a change or recommending a change, right, the, it, it just was going to take longer than that. And so we were getting back, and this is where we mentioned in our, in our finding, or finding, the, the, the final condition, the final, help me, the word I'm looking for, the one page, the, the-
Summary.
The summary, the decision, yes, was, was that it just, it, it, they weren't, the drawings, what was presented was just not adequate, and, and partly it's because it was happening too quickly for a project of this size, for the kinds of changes we were looking for. And so that's where this unfinished quality came from. So I just want to be clear about that. Yes, it's true, moving target's not really fair, but they did need to take more time for projects of this size. Third point I want to make is, just a little bit of design.
30 seconds remain.
Where am I? Keep going?
You can go ahead.
Okay, thanks. On the, on the, as to community character, I'm going to leave that one sit, but as far as scale goes, the, the, the issue with scale is really, you're doing a density analysis, right? Does the building seem like it, is, is the footprint right for, for the surroundings, right? So first of all, there's a fundamental difference between a subdivision, you know, and infill, right? So what we see in Princeton is mostly infill, empty space with buildings stuck on it, space behind them, space in front of them. Here, what we've got is, is, is buildings that are, that are tight to the boundaries of the, the roads that are, have been cut through the site, and it's just, it's fundamentally different character, and it's a lot more dense. And so this is when we say, when we say, I, I analyzed this in the letter I provided the last time, I'm not going to spend too much more time on it. But I want to, I do want to say this, the feeling that we had when we were talking about the design, we're asking, what is wrong with it? Why don't, what, it's a very subjective, it's an open-ended question, but we're designers, and we can talk about these things in that, in that hearing. And a comment that, that I made, and I, and I think at one point, and I think it's, I think it really kind of summarizes it, is that you could take a cookie cutter, the size and shape of this site, the Big Wave site, and put it down in Princeton, and take an average chunk of Princeton, right, and put it back down in this site. You took Princeton and you put it on the site, but it could still not work. It could still be wrong. It could still be the wrong scale somehow. It could still not be the right character. There's more to it than just the stuff. And at the other end of the spectrum, you could design a single building. I'm not saying I encourage this, but you could imagine it, as an architect, you could imagine it, one building on that site that's just, wow, it's just great. It could be done. I don't know how, it's probably not very likely to succeed, but it's at least theoretically possible. What we're looking for, what we were looking for was a design that made us say, this is right, and we didn't see that. And it's not a simple matter of, of numerical analysis, quantitative analysis of scale, or it's more than that. And that intangible brings me to my last point, which is that Design Review is the mechanism the county has created to determine if things meet community standards. And my understanding is, and I could be completely wrong with this, you know better than I will, but part of the reason Design Review is applicable to this project is this project. The first iteration of it created enough concern among the community that it became part of what led to having Design Review. So it's sort of, it's become a circle. And so I think it's important to keep that in mind. And I'm, I'm done, and I do just want to say one other thing, if you indulge me, I'm I wasn't listening that closely, but I think I heard the applicant threaten to sue the county if you don't approve it. And I have to say, as, as Design Review member, you know, I don't know what my relationship would be to, to a lawsuit like that, but it was pretty unsettling to me. I also happen to have a law degree in, a background in that, and, and I'm a little uncomfortable with that as a member of the profession, so. Just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Do the chair?
Oh, and I'm available for questions. You want me to stay up here?
Do the chair, may I ask a question? So I wanted to clarify, and this is one of the questions I, I think I prefaced at the beginning, is that I understand that your coastside Design Review Committee meeting occurred, I think, before the latest site plan and drawings came out, which, like, our, our sets are dated January 10, 2015. So at that time, I, I would presume you did not have the proposed building elevations in these, in the drawings on AS 103. Is that correct?
Just looking over what you're looking at, I think we had that or something similar to that, actually.
Okay. Do you, do you recall if you had anything by George New and Associates, any, any drawings?
I, I personally don't, if you're looking at that drawing, I'm not, I don't, I'm sorry, can I just, over your shoulder?
Sure.
So this, this, this is all-
These were not the plans reviewed at the December 18 CDRC, but they were provided to the large Big Wave email group, including all members of the CDRC on the 7th.
The 7th of January?
Yes, a week ago.
These new, these new drawings?
That's correct. A link to these drawings, well, and the staff report.
So given that, my, my, and that puts you unfairly on the spot, I apologize though.
I'm, I'm here for you.
But I guess what, what we have in, in, in front of us is newer than what the Design Review Committee had in front of them at the time, because I think Camille just said these were subsequent to that meeting. Is that correct?
Well, it probably, it probably doesn't matter that much.
They're very comparable, the elevations, oh, sorry.
So what I, all I'm trying to do is, is, because we're, we're being asked to approve or not approve, and, and I'm assuming it's based upon the latest drawings that we have. So my question, and if you need to take some time and review these and then get back to us, to say, is your opinion the same given these latest drawings? Would be my question.
And, and I think, I think the answer is almost certainly yes. The, the changes that, that we're aware of that happened, and we did see, I know we did see, I, I don't remember exactly which drawings or how many, but, but basically, it's the, it's, it's, it's the same project with a couple more slices cut through, and, and so it's really mostly the same thing, and, and so that's where our summary statement came from. It's, 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 if it's not exactly the same sheets you have, it's the same design.
Okay, well, I, I'd just like to be sure, so I'm going to let you just-
I can, I can tell you, this, we did see, we did see that, I'm sorry, we did, we did see a, a plan with the buildings cut into a couple more pieces. And it was, it was, it was that layout, whether, whether it was that exact drawing, or if that was more recent than ours, I-
Well, the reason I'm asking, and I'm kind of persisting on this, is that this is what we're looking at today, and so the opinion of the Design Review Commission is, you know, obviously, an advisory body to this, and so I would like to know what their position is on these latest drawings, if that's possible at all. So that's why I said I, you can have my copy and take a look at them, and-
Well, I, I can, I don't, I can, I can, I can tell you that, that what I, what I see there, if, if, if anything, is just a little bit more cleaned up from what we had, and so, but, but, I'm sorry.
May I?
Please.
The answer is no.
Those exact pages, but the design is-
No, we didn't, we didn't see it. Close drawings. Any changes or, any close drawings?
Well, but, but there's, okay.
Okay, so, so the answer is that you did not see these drawings?
Not, I'm told we didn't see, that's my recollection, we didn't see those exact pages.
Okay.
Yeah. But the, some of them are the same, many of them. Anything else?
Excuse me, we do have a, a letter that we received from you guys, right? I'm trying to remember, that is pretty recent with, that I assume it referred to this plan or the opinion that you had on that. Because it-
That was the point I was trying to make, is that their meeting and their decision letter came in December, in December 18, and these plans that we have here, that are in our packet, are dated January 10, 2015?
But I think the opinion of the letter that, that we have is a lot more recent than that.
Right, we met last week.
Oh, you met, you met last week.
And the, and the decision letter is from last week.
Okay.
Right.
So that, they would have these plans at that time, because Camille provided those plans by last week.
Are those-
We're getting conflicting information here.
I, I think Mr. Sarab accurately described the evolution of the project and the plans in terms of the fact that the elevations remained almost exactly the same as the elevations that the Design Review Committee reviewed. The differences over time have been in the number of buildings and the way in which they've been separated.
He's got it, he's got it.
The original North Project alternative, the nine-building alternative, was very similar to the eight-building alternative that's in front of you. The meeting that they had, the marathon meeting, on was on the four-building alternative. But throughout it all, the overall design has remained almost exactly the same. It's just been minor modifications to the way in which the buildings are separated and organized on the site, as well as changes to the parking and circulation and landscaping that they had discussed.
So to just add to that, I am the chair of the Coastal Design Review Committee. My name is Beverly Garrity. We, that summary is from the December meeting where we reviewed the Big Wave Eight project based on drawings at that time. So we have not seen these drawings, or reviewed them, or commented on them. Our summary is from our December 8 meeting, our December meeting, I'm not sure if it's the 8.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Thank you. What did you want to sign out? Please.
Well, you can see how the changes in the project make things complicated, even for people that are looking at it on a regular basis and are very familiar with it. But Mr. Monowitz is pretty much correct, that we did look at the eight-building option last week, and that's where our final statement came from. It wasn't last week.
That's not what we deterred.
Okay, then I'm wrong. Okay. No, I'm sorry, December 18th. See, we had a meeting last week, I thought it was the other one. Thank you. It's late for all of us.
Yes, it is, yes. Thanks, thanks. Okay, is that all our speakers? I'm gonna assume that's yes. Thank you for your patience.
I'll move, we close publicly here.
I'll second.
Move in a second, all in favor? Five to none, that's five to zero. So.
Maybe Steve will comment on some of the-
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Can we force Steve to comment on some of the public comment?
We heard him. There's no, no.
With permission of the chair?
Go for it.
I think he was talking about this, you know.
Oh, yeah. It is like-
Yeah, with permission of the chair, I just have a few remarks in response to the public comments that have been received. First, a point of clarification regarding concern about the propane storage tanks. I did have a chance during the brief break to speak to both the fire official as well as the applicant, and the applicant has clarified that there is no berm or wall proposed along that property line. What is proposed is a drainage well, a dip in the topography in order to direct the drainage that's coming onto the site towards Airport Street. In addition, the fire official indicated that the propane facility is not permitted to off-gas, that per the terms of their permit, they are supposed to transport those tanks to primary facility elsewhere to off-gas, and so that is not supposed to be a regular occurrence, and they are taking steps to ensure that, that that doesn't become a regular occurrence. I wanted to respond to concerns regarding the FAA's position, and just to give, make sure the commission has a background on it, when the county acquired the airport from the federal government at a very low price, we agreed that we would manage it and the surrounding land uses as an airport, and with, with uses that are compatible with airport operations. And to ensure that we comply with that requirement, we have carefully reviewed the project's compliance with our local airport land use compatibility plan, and we have determined that it is compliant with those policies. Now, the FAA, should they disagree with that conclusion, does have the ability to limit the grant funds that they will give to the county. And we were in this position previously when this project was approved in 2010, and at that time, both the planning commission and the board of supervisors felt confident in its conclusion that the project will be compatible with the airport, and was willing to take the risk, if you will, that there's this chance that grants might not be given to the county. Regarding the definition of dwelling unit, a question on that?
I might. So when the speaker indicated that the relevant grant assurance has not changed, I assume that means then that the, that her interpretation is that the FAA, that funding for the airport from the FAA could be in jeopardy? Is that right?
That's, that's my understanding.
And we have a statement on record indicating that that's the case, but according to her, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out the history of this, too. It seemed to-
Yes, I'll, I'll let Mr. Fox jump in, but the FAA has been concerned about our conclusions regarding compatibility with the airport, and has identified that should be fair to meet our commitment of ensuring compatibility that our grants are at risk. Mr. Fox? And so, my inter-
Well, kind of, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm still wondering, we have competing, I mean, it sounds like the county has determined that there isn't a problem, but there is this outstanding statement from the FAA that there may be. So I'm, I'm puzzled with that.
Yes, understandably so. We have made a very diligent effort to try and get the FAA to provide specific recommendations or comments, or identify particular aspects of the project that they think need to change to, in an effort to try and resolve those, and they haven't been able, or they haven't been willing to provide that level of specificity. So we have used our best professional judgment, we've used the state guidelines, and we feel that we met our obligation to address airport limitations.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. The, we had- Okay, you're welcome. The, we had a speaker who asked about what constitutes dwelling unit, and how does that relate to density. Our zoning regulations typically deal with residential development, low-density, medium-density, high-density, and we implement those designations by calculation, number of dwelling units per acre, and in the most residential districts, the dwelling unit, well, in all residential districts, the dwelling unit is a place that has all the facilities necessary to operate as a complete residence. This project is distinct from that in that it is a sanitary, the wellness center, and the units are not entirely self-sufficient. You couldn't live within one of these units without having the support of the overall facility. So we, in terms of regulating density of dwelling units, this is a distinct type of project, and is typically addressed through our residential density standards. But we are concerned about density in relationship to community character and compatibility, and I, I think that, as I mentioned before, the graphic that is, that accompanies the Coastal Commission letter really demonstrates that the density, which is a function not just of the size of the project, but over the amount, the area of the land, is really pretty equivalent, if not less, than some of the density that you see in the adjacent communities. Now, size is a different matter, and the size of the project has been reduced in terms of height to protect visual resources, it's been set back from the resource constraints that's necessary to ensure the protection of the wetland resources and continuation of agricultural uses on the site. And so our conclusion is that the density is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and that the size of the project is consistent with the resource protection requirements of our local coastal program. Finally, I wanted to talk about...
Steve, I have a question on that as well, and it's something that I met with Karen Holmes at the, and with Kim Gainesa the other day, they were kind enough to bring me a set of maps and answer a bunch of questions, and one of the questions that I had, had to do with, and there was, I think, some confusion on my part, about whether these dwellings have kitchens, and I gather they don't, but that they will have the capacity to have kitchens should someone desire that? Is that right? So I thought that's what I understood from the, the letter, the comments that...
Perhaps I wanted to ask the applicant to...
Would you, would you mind coming to, so I could ask you some questions?
Well, they're, they're not being supplied with kitchens, because there is a central kitchen, and, you know, anywhere in this facility, somebody can apply for a building permit, whether they get it or not, it's really dependent on it, but there's no intention for these things to have kitchens. But if somebody wants to put in a refrigerator that needs an electrical thing, they'll need to get a permit, and if it's in violation of the conditions, they won't get the permit, so. But the intention, the project isn't dwelling units per se, it's a, a community kitchen, like community housing, where you have a separate living space, and that's, that's what it's intended to be.
So they won't have, like, I don't even know what you would call it, but provisions that could be improved should the individual living there want that?
No, they're not being supplied with anything like that.
Nothing like that, okay. And what, what constitutes a kitchen? Is it a refrigerator? Is it a refrigerator and a stove, or water?
Well, it's usually related to fixed units, and it has to be a residential kitchen that would support a normal dwelling, which would be like an oven, a refrigerator, a, you know, whatever, but those things aren't part of this project, so I'm not an expert on what, I know I have a kitchen in my house, and that's identifiable, but it's, it, these are, it's a community, and it's like co-housing type setup is what it, what it is.
Yeah.
Because most of, people will get the experience of cooking, but it's going to be in the central kitchen, and it's a, you know, commercial-sized kitchen, so. I don't know if that's sufficiently vague of an answer, but...
Thanks, yeah.
This is the other point I'd like to make, is self-sufficient units typically have much higher water use than the standard residential use, and this project is tightly controlled by the amount of water it can use, so it would not be in the project proponent's interest to allow their tenants to actively turn their rooms into a residence where they don't use the common kitchen and so forth. So because of the relationship of water use to kitchen, that's another restriction as to the ability of the project to become independent living spaces. With regard to concerns about this being precedent-setting, this is really the only M1 area within the mid-coast in which a business park of this type would be okay. So I don't think there is any real concern that there will be other office parks of this size elsewhere. We don't have the zoning for that. Now, the wellness center is allowed as a use in any zoning district with a use permit.
Sanitarium.
The, yeah, the sanitarium. But, you know, that's a unique component of this project, and its presence at this site is a result of the availability of land to, at an affordable price, to the project applicants. But the business park is not precedent-setting, is my point. Finally, with regard to issues at site borders and traffic, traffic is a problem on the coast right now, and the solution to traffic problems on the coast is going to be multi-agency effort that's going to require the contribution of the county, lots of various projects. The mitigation that's been required of this project is proportional to its impact. We can't ask a project to solve problems that pre-exist, that are beyond the level of impact the project will have. We believe that the analysis showing that mitigation required of this project in proportion to the impact it will introduce is appropriate and effective. It won't solve all of the traffic problems in the area, and this, the Planning and Building Department, as well as other departments in the county, are doing our best to take proactive effort to address the larger problems throughout the community, but I think it would be appropriate to hold this project up based upon these larger concerns, given the fact that the mitigation effectively offsets their contributions to the problem. So that concludes my remarks.
One of the people, one of the public questions is that we left the south parcel still open for development. Do you have a comment on that?
The only portion that is open for development is the portion that is currently proposed for the boat storage facility, and as Ms. Lenny Roberts pointed out, there is the possibility that should that not get built, or even if it does get built, that the land transfers and some future owner comes in to implement an alternative proposal. So that is an accurate statement. Any proposal other than boat storage on that limited portion of the lot that's not protected through easements will need to comply with the waterfront zoning designation, will need to go through subsequent sequel analysis, and will need to get separate permits. So there is the possibility that there will be other types of development in the future there, but just like any other parcel that's in private ownership that could be redeveloped, it would be held to the standards of our local coastal program, needing to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act and other things.
So if I may, actually, you answered a lot of the questions that I had, but I do have one more question, which, so I, I have a conflict, because the staff presentation indicated that the maps we've been provided, the, they comply with requirements and, of subdivision requirements, but then I did question Ms. Roberts from the Committee of Green, for Green foothills, and she said it was her opinion that they did not. So I guess I would like a, a third opinion, perhaps from, from County Council, as to the maps that we've been provided, and this, this, I think is the ones we have from George Mewen Associates, whether in whole or in part, do they comply with the county's requirements?
I think in thinking of the idea of a map, one thinks of a page that has drawings on it, and our subdivision regulations certainly contemplate that a vesting tentative map and a tentative parcel map will contain certain types of information. Some of them pictogram, some of them textual, and certainly all of them containing some kind of information or data. In my review of this, and in talking to staff about it, I think it's, it's inarguably true that any individual page of the map doesn't contain 100% of the information that's saw in our subdivision regulations and requirements for those maps. I am reasonably confident that the entirety of the submittal, which is what I look at, as it exists today, is adequate to meet our subdivision regulations. No individual page is going to contain 100% of what is before, but I look at subdivision maps all the time, and as I said, some of the information is visual, other textual, both of them together constitute a legal depiction of the rights that are conveyed by the subdivision map once it's recorded, and I think that the idea is that it's the final map that will synthesize a lot of what has been offered by the owner for dedication for various purposes. So it doesn't look exactly like all of the maps that are generally filed by subdivision applicants, but in totality, I think that the application includes everything to look for.
Can I ask maybe Steve on that? Is the reason for, you know, one particular page, one particular, particular map not having all the information, it's for the purpose of clarity? Would I be wrong to say that, that you break it up so that as you lay it out in more pages, you're better able to understand, without cramming everything into a, you know, something that then it doesn't make any sense?
That's an accurate statement. I think Ms. Roberts used the example of the Finnish verse, of the existing versus Finnish consonants, and I'm not sure that those were all clearly depicted on those maps, but as Mr. Fox explained, the totality of the package is clear as to what the Finnish elevation will be.
And by package, you mean everything?
Yes.
And, and that was the other question I had, is, is, so we have, and I brought that up, and with regard to conditions of approval, there's a, a number of pieces of information that are required in the conditions of approval, and I may have even written down the number, but that, yeah, condition, revised condition number 60. And, and so that was my, my question, is, you know, the conditions of approval are a legal document. I mean, it's not just, I, I disagree with the, the idea that it's something that's just going to be put away and filed away and forgotten about. I mean, as far as our actions here today, we make findings and, and conditions, and we permit conditions of approval, that's the legally binding documents, along with the, the map that gets recorded, so I thought, I, I didn't, if you're saying the entire package includes all of that, that in, contained in all of that is the necessary requirements for the county in totality?
I think I'm about to be scolded by Mashu about inadvertently communicating to applicants from subdivisions that it's okay to make the public works department content check throughout the submittal for all the required elements, and that's not okay. We would prefer that a subdivision map contain all of the elements that are required by our subdivision ordinance, and I believe there are ways to do it, and we see certainly with simpler subdivisions that have fewer overlaying requirements, fewer overlaying zones. I mean, we are talking here about two parcels with a fairly complicated regulatory overlay, and perhaps, perhaps it wasn't possible for this particular project to depict everything all in one place. So I don't mean to communicate that, that future subdivision applicants can just throw it all against the wall and make public works, do, do the hard work of figuring out where everything's been met, but I believe in this instance, we did that work, and we were able to determine that our questions could be answered by the totality of the submittal, if not any individual page of the, of the proposed vesting tentative map. And I'll let, I'll let Mashu speak for himself, after I preemptively defended myself.
Can I just follow up on that, is, so the tentative versus the final map, is, was there potential to include additional information that's necessary on the final map?
As far as clarification, so the tentative map is, is something that we look at, it provides some idea of what the improvements are. When you get to the final map stage, that is all about the land. How is it divided? Who owns what piece? What are the easements? What are the rights of those easements? That will be defined on the final map. And so what we're looking at here today is just the tentative map with the conditions that's shown in this package. So together with these two pieces, what our surveyor will go through is item by item, anywhere where it says prior to recordation or required by the final map, he'll pull out those sections to make sure that they get on to the final map.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a follow-on question to Commissioner Simonson's questions, and when I look at this map that was from an earlier Big Wave, I think it was from the original project, it's called the Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map for Commercial Condominium Purposes, Big Wave Office Park, everything's on this map. It's actually really easy to read, and, and everything you need is right here. So in contrast, you know, and I appreciate that the applicant was working hard to accommodate needs in a very short period of time, what I would not want to see, however, is a precedent being set for other development projects where it's like, okay, well, we're under time pressure, so we're just going to put a bunch of maps together, and we know from the Big Wave project, a precedent has been set, you approve it, and it's okay. And I, I have a concern about that. So I would wonder if you have any suggestions for how we might, okay?
So many of the content requirements of the subdivision regulations relate to utilities, grading, lot dimensions, and the way that the applicant put together these plans, the information, the content, meets the content requirements of the subdivision regulations, I don't mean the entire file, I mean these plans. And there, the utility is on the utility page. Lot dimensions are actually provided on the floor plan page, and the floor plan page is labeled, while it says floor plan, the side of it says vesting tentative map. So, but I think what's confusing is there's actually a specific page, see one that's called the vesting tentative map, but if you read sort of the sidebar, there's many pages that consist of, you know, together, the vesting tentative map. So, and there is, there could, and that is allowed, a multi-page vesting tentative map is allowed, especially if it provides clarity in terms of, okay, here are the utilities, here are the lot dimensions, here are the grading, grading information.
Okay? Yeah, I guess, when I look at this map, I, I look at it, you know, obviously, that's what I do every day, I deal with maps. So when I start looking at something, I always have to look for what it is that I'm looking, am I looking for electrical, am I looking for plumbing, all that, and you always go to your page, which tells you exactly where it is. And, you know, the, the first page may show a lot of things that will, that are going to be there, but then the following pages always have to be more clear as to how the sizes of things are going to be and all that. So, and you do need to break it up in order to get that clarity, otherwise it's just too much in one page, and especially when you're dealing with, you know, several things, plumbing, electrical, and you name it. plumbing, electrical, and you name it. It starts to get really fuzzy, and you don't really understand what's there when there's too much information in one particular page. You've got to break it down. That's, you know, my opinion on why these things are the way they are.
Are we comfortable? Great. Any comments or Tim? We've got a few choices here on how to proceed. Anything you want to chime in on as far as how we might want to go about this?
Well, of course, once the public area has been closed, it's a matter of the commission deliberating on what they think are the major issues. And then, at any moment, a motion is potentially in order. I would say that, at least in my view, the major motions that might be made on the project are to approve the project by accepting the staff recommendation and making the findings listed, the sort of usual planning commission-type motion that you're so familiar with. And in the past, when there's been a motion to approve that has had insufficient number of votes to complete the business, another motion is then in order. And I just wanted to point out that in the decision tree, if either someone wishes to make a motion, a different motion first, it's a matter of whether or not there's a second for that motion. And then, the chair, in his role as the traffic officer for the business of the commission decides whether the motion is appropriately formed. But what would, what I think would happen, if there's a motion to either approve or to deny, we would determine whether the motion passed. In the event of a denial, it's been the, based on how the discussion on the motions go, we would have to make a judgment at that point about whether or not the denial is a denial on merits or whether it's a denial because there's a desire for sufficient or for additional information. And so, I think if some member of the commission were willing to make a motion and were prepared to make a motion, I'm not urging that that happened before there's more discussion, but if there were a motion to deny, it would be ideal for our record to figure out whether or not it's a denial on the merits. And if there's a direction to face a denial on findings, whether it's a denial because you are unprepared to make, take an approval action today and wish additional information and to continue to a future meeting. So, any of those sort of general categories of motions could be in order at any time during the course of the discussion.
Okay. I guess the question to the commission is, does everyone feel comfortable with all the information that we've had to make a decision one way or another?
Yeah, I don't know if we have any more questions, but do we want to deliberate before any motion?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
I see. Okay. I think that questions have been answered.
Okay. Well, anyone want to start it off? Fox, Yellen?
Sure. And I can, you know, I mean, I know a lot of folks have written with concerns, and they've kind of categorized them. And what I'll try and do is keep my comments sort of in the same outline. I think, you know, the size, scale, density. I actually think that the California Coastal Commission's belated submission is probably the most telling of anything. And I actually think it's their visual map that convinces me that density is not a problem. I know they were actually trying to make the opposite point with that map. But unfortunately, it's in black and white here. But we got a color version emailed to us where the density of the buildings was within color. And if I can pull it up, I actually would. It really, I get the concept of density in proportion to the size of the property itself. And what I see is, compared to, you know, the adjoining areas, it's actually quite a bit less dense. And so, I mean, I, perhaps they're defining density in a different way. But visually, that document supports to establish, to me, the opposite of what they concluded. And I actually think the applicant provided some information regarding density that was very helpful in the surrounding community with the buildings so close together and in their mass and proportion and size, that that was very helpful. I think the California Coastal Commission said that there was a lack of evidence. And I think they've produced some of the evidence. And I think the applicant has produced that evidence as well regarding the density. So, in my mind, that is actually, I do not feel that it is overly dense for the size of the property. And given that it's, I believe the indication is it's less than 50% of the parcel is developed. So, that, in my mind, actually proves that California Coastal Commission's, it proves opposite of what they were trying to say. I think the traffic was another issue. And, I mean, this comes up a lot. And I've spoken at many planning commissions myself on the opposite side about traffic. And I think the suggestion always has been, you need a good transportation demand management plan. And I see that as one of the conditions of approval. That's something that I looked at. You know, the only suggestion I would perhaps make if that's an issue is, you know, the Property Owners Association could subsidize transit passes because I think it is a very valid point that the population that they are serving may not be people driving vehicles. You know, and while it would be all well and good to have the property owner be responsible for developing infrastructure on Cypress for pedestrians, I think that actually falls outside of our purview. So, given that, I think that the conditions of approval and a transportation demand management plan, which is included in that, is helpful. I did have a question about the Committee for Green Foothills' position that the vesting tentative map, I hope I said that correctly, was inadequate, which I think I have gotten the answer to that on. And so, I don't believe that that's any longer an issue in my mind. And I think that the applicant has adequately addressed the phasing of the project over time. Certainly, the California Coastal Commission's positions on the provision of infrastructure, i.e. water and sanitary, has been advanced. The charming gentleman from the Water District is great. He clearly answers the question, which is, in a full build-out, can you provide the water? And he said yes. So, there you go. I think those are the major issues. And I know it's getting late, so I'm going to pass the microphone.
There was a lot of emotional heart talk in the testimony today. And just to be very clear, my decision is not being based on emotion. That is not a factor. My factor is on the facts in front of me and the findings that are presented to me. With that said, it also isn't about checkboxes. Because you checked all the boxes, you don't get it either. I've been on the other side of the votes because even though I thought they, the applicant thought they had checked all the boxes, the planning commission, the planning department thought they checked all the boxes, they didn't meet the intent. We always have to go back to the intent. What was the intent of the Coastal Commission? What is the intent when the state passed the protection of the coast? What is the intent of the general plan for the county? How do you hold them all together? And does it meet the intent? I would love to sit with you and do design. I like how you think. I've done lots of design as a planning commissioner for the last 15, 20 years. So, I know where you're coming from. So, it would be fun. A community isn't static. It always has to reinvent itself. And some of the things, when I was reading through the Coastal Commission stuff, to me, they're looking very statically. And I think there are consequences in there they haven't thought through. I wish I had more time to think through about what they said. But giving, I buy into the argument we've kicked this can enough around the block. It's time to either say yes or no. So, does it meet the intent of the community, the general plan, what the voters have said? And I'd say yes. I will be voting to approve this.
Well, I agree wholeheartedly that this is not about the emotion, unfortunately, because this is a very emotional project. It's one that, this concept is one that I would love to see promoted around the state, around the country, to provide a creative way of financing affordable housing for developmentally disabled individuals. The challenge for me is the location of this development. And because I live here on the coast, it's very hard for me to ignore that the perspectives of the Midcoast Community Council and the Coastside Design Review Committee and the many neighbors who have contacted me over the last months who live around there, who are really legitimately concerned about the traffic impacts. And of course, you know, the coastside has been, become discovered since the opening of the tunnel. And we are subject to a tremendous amount of increasing visitors, people who are coming to Mavericks and to experience the beauty of this amazing place. So, the traffic concerns are very real. And I appreciate the fact that we have a very strong condition of approval in the roundabout or light on Highway 1. But that's not all of it. I'm concerned that people who are visiting will be impacted. And visitor serving is one of the primary, you know, driving things we need to accommodate on the coast side. So, I do have some residual concerns about traffic. And particularly on Cypress, where just last week, Commissioner Ramirez came out, and we were driving along Cypress. And it was the middle of the day or middle of the afternoon, and there was a stack of five or six cars trying to get out onto Highway 1. It wasn't even rush hour, it wasn't even morning. So, when I think about 550 parking places and cars coming to and from, you know, this development, I'm very concerned about the traffic impacts and how it will negatively impact our communities. With regard to the project's scale and size, I may be in the minority here, but I am one of those people who would like to see an alternative that's smaller, as requested by the Coastal Commission, and I believe as requested by the Midcoast Community Council. I think there's a project here. I want to see this project go forward, but I would really love to be able to see an alternative that is smaller. So, those are my thoughts right now.
Well, thank you. Thanks for your thoughts on that. And I just want to say that, you know, as someone who comes over very seldom to this side, I feel that, you know, we, those of us that live on the other side, we also claim this side as some, someone of our own, even though we don't live here. Because, you know, everybody wants to come to the beach and enjoy what is here. That's a fact. With that, you're going to have problems of traffic because of where you live. Now, with the double slide that opened, it's going to compound the problem. Traffic is an issue that is not going to go away. The county, I believe, you know, it's already working on some of those things to mitigate some of these problems. So, when I look at this particular project, I don't see it as the one that is going to impact the area to the point where it will be complete gridlock. It will add some, but the problem's already here. It wasn't, it's not that it's coming because this project is coming. And I think there are opportunities to fix some of the problems along the way. So, looking at the project overall, you know, the plan and all the documents that we've had a chance to go over, over and over, my only concern that I have, well, many, but my overarching concern is that the California Coastal Commission still has a lot of issues. My concern, to me, the project is fine. It should go forward. My concern is that the Coastal Commission, after we approve this thing, will go back and deny it again. Or, you know, there will be an appeal once it goes to the board supervisors, and we'll be back on the same place where we were. And that's what I didn't want to happen. That's why the last time I was saying, you know, let's give it another try and see if we can iron out some of the problems. But it's obvious that we can go on and on and on, and nothing else is going to happen. I think it's probably time to go one way or the other.
Great. Well, I don't think it's any secret that I voted for this project back whenever. And now, we've got what I see as tremendous compromise and a smaller scaled-down version that I don't have any problem with the project now before. A lot of the issues that have been raised, I think have been overcome with a great staff report. And so, needless to say, I'm certainly open to a motion for an approval if someone wants to be so bold.
Sure, I can, I would, well, I don't, can I shortcut it? I move that we make the recommended findings and commit conditions of approval as presented in the staff report and as revised in the presentation made by staff, which updated a number of the conditions of approval and which the applicant has agreed to. Did I get it all in there?
I would have started with certifying the.
Yeah, I was going to say.
All right. Well, okay. Okay. I read the, all right. In opinion, do I need to read all seven items on the recommendation?
I would strongly urge at least mentioning them into the record.
Okay.
Tim, correct?
I'm most concerned about being clear that you're certifying the addendum to the EIR. I think in other instances, the planning commission has said and accept the staff recommendations by making the findings approved, making the approvals listed and attaching A to the staff report. But I just want the record to be clear about the action.
Okay. So, in addition to what I previously stated, I want to make it clear that I move that. Okay. I move that we approve the addendum and final addendum to the certified 2010 Big Wave Wellness Center and Office Project Draft Environmental Impact Report and final EIR, 2010 EIR, for the revised Big Wave North Parcel Alternative Project, Big Wave NPA Project Addendum, along with the information contained in the staff report for the January 14, 2015 Planning Commission Meeting, which supplements the addendum. And that's, that's my motion.
And I will second.
Is that satisfactory, Tim?
At the moment, the motion is to approve the addendum and final addendums in EIR. Will there be a separate motion to approve the project? Because that's not part of the motion. I'm sorry, did you take my advice to mean that you had to do them separately?
No, 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 no. I was hoping that I hit all that with the first part of the motion that I stated.
I don't believe so. I could be wrong. But I believe it adds to what your motion was to issue the permits and by making the findings and.
But I think I said that.
Okay. If you did, I'm sorry, I was focused on the law.
That's okay. I said, my recommendation was we accept the staff report and make the recommended findings and conditions of approval. And then, I added the additional language about the EIR and the addendum to EIR, which now includes the material that was presented at this staff, by staff at this planning commission meeting. Good?
So, within that, you're approving the use permit, the major subdivisions, the coastal development permit, the design review permit, and the grading permit? development permit, the design review permit, and the grading permit? And recommend all that to the board supervisor?
I would be, yes, that would be moving approval of all those as well.
With exception that it's not the recommendation to the board supervisors, you're making the decision which is appealable to the board. Oh, okay. Forgive me. Recommending approval of the development agreement, which does look to the board.
All right. Thanks, if I clarify.
And just to be very clear, my second was of all of that.
Okay.
Is it appropriate to make a friendly amendment now or after the vote? Suggest a friendly amendment.
Whether an amendment is friendly is dependent upon the perception of the moving party.
I would intend it to be.
Can move to amend as the major motion, and then see if there's support of amendment.
Okay, I would like to move to amend the major motion to include the deed restriction on Lot 1 for the major boat storage area, to keep that from having additional development potential. Right? So, a deed restriction on the remainder of Lot 1, you make the vote. Remember, remember...
No, I understand, I understand.
I'm afraid I don't. So, the recommendation and the conditions of approval include easements on all areas outside of the proposed boat storage. So, is the deed restriction you're suggesting, does that apply to the portion of the parcel which contains the boat storage?
The boat storage, right.
And how would that portion of the parcel be restricted, to only allow boat storage?
Or a use that is not, no more intense? I don't know how you would word that. Can...
Can we, can we actually, like, pick a vote on the first motion and perhaps have a second motion on the other thing? Ms. Fox?
Well, this is where, traditionally, the moving party is willing to accept the amendment. As friendly, we just sort of treat it as procedurally proper to both the moving party and the second agree. According to strict parliamentary procedure, if there's opposition by either of those two parties, then there has to be a minor motion to amend the major motion, which would have to carry up three votes. So, I guess we would look to the moving party in the second about whether they're willing to allow their motion to amend the major motion, and if not, then we should have called for a motion.
Okay, and then I'm going to ask you another question. Can I ask the applicant if they would agree to that deed restriction?
Yes.
You know, we can't worry, because the applicant is a nonprofit owner, and I just can't speak before. Parcel is owned by Big Wave Group, so that's, I don't...
Okay, so, so...
But I think, I'm sorry, maybe discussion on that is...
Just to ensure that we get everything on record, if we are going to entertain questions or input, it would be great if people could come up to the mic, so that we can ensure that it's all proper.
So, that's okay. I heard the applicant, and the applicant's answer is, no, that they could not be prepared to basically accept that, and so I will not accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, then, we've had a motion and a second.
Well, actually, there is a minor motion on the floor to amend, and if, because it was a request for friendly amendment, Commissioner Kirsten Tucker wishes to actually make a minor motion to amend the major motion, then as a vote on that amendment would then be amended. She is entitled to a determination whether or not there's support on the commission to amend the motion.
Okay, then.
So, is it appropriate for me to make that minor amendment now?
All right, well, I would like to do that, simply because we've talked a lot this evening about density on this parcel. And this particular parcel is being subdivided and could very easily be sold and, you know, be turned into a much higher intensity use. So, given that we are concerned about the density and the intensity on this property, I would like to make a motion that we provide a deed restriction on the boat storage area to keep it at an equivalent or lesser use.
So, do we need a second on that, Tim, or do we just vote on that?
It does require a second.
Hearing none. So, we have the original new indoor record for a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, it passes four to one. Congratulations.
Just to make everyone aware that this decision is appealable to the board supervisors, as well to the California Coastal Commission.
Could I have you celebrate outside? We still have the meeting going on. We've got 10 minutes.
There's no correspondence, other matters, there's no consideration, study session, there's no directives, report.